If everyone would stand, we'll call this city council meeting to order. At this time, we will have a word of silence. Thank you. I will ask Councilman Mr. Hampton to lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening to each of you here. We're here to conduct business for the city of Georgetown and city council meeting for today is Monday, November the 10th, 2025. We will follow the agenda as written. We will have roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Wilkins, present.
Here.
Mr. Chris?
Here.
Mrs. Hambrick?
Present.
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Menke?
Present.
Mrs. Flusby Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestein? Mr. Stone?
Here.
Again, council, I want to remind you that when you're speaking, be sure to turn on your mics. And when you're not speaking, turn them off, please. Thank you. Item number three is the approval of minutes. At this time, I will entertain a motion for October 27th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Hampton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hambrick. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item number four, the receipt of the check register. Council, if you have received us either by electronic and or paper, raise your hand. That the record reflects that all has received it. Item number five, events application flannel and frost. All right, Mr. Beckett?
Yes. Good evening, council. Much like the third string quarterback on your football team, I'll do the job, but not nearly as well as the people who should have been here tonight. They are homesick, so I'm covering. So I'll answer any questions always, but here to ask for your approval for our flannel and frost event. It's December 20th. Asking to close the square outside of here, town square, the farmer's market pavilion down there, and then Court Street in the middle. Hopefully you have the application in front of you. I can answer a few questions if you have those, but we have already had meetings with tourism, public works, briefly with police to get their buy-in. And then we've also met with the downtown businesses that are on board because they're going to be driving a whole lot of traffic down to their businesses the week before Christmas. So I think they're pretty excited and support what we're doing as well.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms. Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Chris. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Thank you, Mr. Beckett.
Thank you.
Item number six, public comments. On public comments, this gives the citizens of this community an opportunity to come to address council. Once again, this is not a question and answer. You've got four minutes to address your concern with the council. Madam Clerk will keep the time for you. At three minutes, she will let you know that one minute is left. And at the end of one minute is left and four minutes is up, she will then let you know that and you at that time, if you will be respectful and take your seat so we may continue on. When you get to the podium, make sure you put your name, make sure you announce it so it can be a part of public record. All right, I have several here. Mr. Bill Abernathy, water questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Bill Abernathy and back again this month just to encourage action regarding the Water Department. You might remember from my comments last month that I'm concerned about water quality, that we somehow find a way to eliminate the bad taste and odor that occurs at least once a year. If we know that it happens, let's be proactive in resolving it or at least mitigating it. And I'd love to hear specific plans from the council or from the Water Department to accomplish that in the future. Second concern is the seemingly unaccountable spikes in some consumers' water bills. I say unaccountable because there doesn't seem to be reasons for some of those spikes, at least as the people look at their bills. And because the Water Department has thus far refused to be accountable and give answers as to the number of those that have happened and the causes. I appreciate those of you who last month have requested a report on this issue, and I thank you for that and hope that we will hear that report. I think a transparent review and appeals process needs to be in place for those kinds of bills. Maybe including a citizen review board that could establish a consistent and fair appeal process. My third area of concern is the clear violation of the law when there was a closed meeting of the Water Department Board with the public locked out on October the 7th. I have emailed each of you, including the mayor, and I understand your desire to not interfere with an investigation by the Attorney General. However, I think the council should at least demand to know what was discussed, which wouldn't really interfere with the investigation. My fear is that the Attorney General either won't address it or by the time they get around to doing it, nobody will remember what was talked about. Finally, I would love to hear a clear statement from the Water Department as to the status of the lawsuit surrounding the wastewater treatment plan. City Council oversees the Water Department and the Water Department is answerable to this body. So I would love to hear those addressed either by the Water Department, by Chase Osavito, or by any of you as council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Glass, local government.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not running for any public office, so I'm not making a campaign speech, but I respect my comments tonight about this taxes and fees. The people of Georgetown are asked to pay an extra eight dollars a month just to be able to access 911. We pay a higher garbage fee than we had before with a lesser quality service. Of course, our water rates went up 65% last year or year before last, so we've got that on us. And then the insurance tax on premiums where I think it almost equals about a 10% tax. And if you talk about affordable housing, if you own a house, you have to insure it. But to add insult to injury on the collection of that, premiums have about doubled in the last couple of years. So you guys ought to be flush with cash because you're profiting off inflation, okay? Looks to me like that in order to be fair to the citizenry, instead of collecting 10% on, say, a typical bill of $1,000, you should be only collecting 5% on what's a typical $2,000 bill now. Be the same amount of money. And the biggest problem is, is that all these taxes and fees are only paid by people who live in Georgetown. But we're still required to pay a 1% city occupational tax and a 1% county occupational tax. So I think it's quite clear that local government's collecting enough tax. I mean, 2% is about as high as it goes anywhere in the state as far as counties and cities. But the way the scheme is set up, the city taxpayers don't get any benefit from what they're paying the county. In other words, we elect magistrates and we elect the county judge, but if you call them about a problem in the city, they'll say call the mayor's office, okay? So that's what we fought the American Revolution over was taxation without representation. Except this is taxation without any benefit. I mean, if you get put in jail, that would be a benefit because the county pays for the jail, but most of us don't ever want to go to jail or try to stay away from there. But outside of that, what do they provide inside the city for the 1%? I can't think of too many things. We're constantly hearing from different departments.
That's three minutes.
That we need more, you know, more personnel, just like fire departments. We've got seven fire departments in the county. We've got more fire departments outside the city limits than we have inside, okay? So I think with seven fire departments and all the staff that's on duty during a typical shift, why do we need a fifth or sixth fire station? You know, when you talk about a fourth, and some council members talk about maybe five or six, that'd be 10, you know? So anyway, I just want to bring that up tonight. I'll be back later on to discuss more specifics, but we don't need new council members or a mayor to fix these problems. You all are quite capable. I voted for some of you one time or another, so anyway, I'll talk to you later.
Mr. Dan Holman.
Dan Holman, Georgetown. Yeah, so what Steve was just talking about, specifically about the county and the city tax split, is just very wrong. And this needs to be addressed and fixed. And if you want to look at something specific, and this is again for anyone who doesn't know, the county is taking half of business taxes inside of the city limits of Georgetown, which is not, doesn't happen almost anywhere else in Kentucky. So then therefore, that is about 25 million a year is flowing to the county that should be coming to the city. So specifically, stormwater is something to look at, and the county is not funding, they're collecting business taxes inside the city, but they're not funding stormwater inside the city. And the question is why? And the answer is because nobody's ever asked them to, is one reason. Like Mayor Jenkins needs to bring this up as an issue. As you know, like Joe Pat has indicated that he's willing to have this conversation. So in case any of you haven't heard this yet, Joe Pat is willing to talk to you all about stormwater, but he's waiting to be asked. And as far as I know yet, nobody has had the boldness to ask him. It's a very simple question. This tax situation is really wrong. Somebody just needs to talk about it. So real quick, just the taxes about, the property valuation is on there real quick. Just one question. Some people have mentioned that they believe there might be, some of the houses on Main Street are, who have like maybe influential people in town, get valued lower than they should. So that's just a question. Does that, is it fair on Main Street, some of those old houses where some people live? Are those houses paying the property taxes that they should pay? And then what I really wanted to talk about was water tonight. So yeah, this is a huge night of the, you know, finalizing, this is the culmination of the rate increase, like where you're borrowing $72 million, which is exceeding by far the city, the budget of the city is giving to the water company for the wastewater treatment plant that went tens of millions of dollars cost overruns, basically, you know, was part of that cost. And that's going to be paid back by rate payers. The rate payers of Georgetown will be paying that bill. It's a revenue bonds. So the question is, I would vote against that in a heartbeat. So there's like two, Karen is not here tonight, so maybe she won't be voting no. But I would hope somebody would vote no on that if you weren't okay with the rate increase. If you don't think that the rate model is the best model, if you don't think that anything about this is right, just vote no on it as a statement. Hopefully, at least somebody will say, you know, they don't approve of this. So then who is overseeing the water company? So parts of questions have come up. Are you awake, Greg? You looked a little sleepy there for a second. I'm sorry. So we have, yeah, just making sure everybody's paying attention.
Address your thing here, please, not your council.
I don't appreciate your accusation.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to address it, your comments is addressing here.
So regarding the water board, there are two members are leaving right now. The chairperson and another senior member are leaving the water board at the end of the year. It's an opportunity to maybe rethink, is this really the best oversight of the water company? You're not happy, you're like, that the finance department and everybody else approved all this to go through, but you all were taken by surprise. There should be more oversight directly by the city council. The Water Department and Chase should be overseen directly by city council and they don't need this middle thing. You actually asked good questions last time, Greg. I appreciated those of Chase.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah, yeah. So you should do more of that. Like you all should be directly overseeing the water company without this middle layer of the water board. And then, yeah, just posting things online. Can we please post the water board meeting packets online on the city website?
That's four minutes.
That's something that hopefully you all can, a simple thing you can ask them to do. Thank you.
All right. Is there any, okay. Kendrick Bacon?
Go ahead and start now.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members, neighbors, and friends. I'm here today to talk about Georgetown water rate increases, more to bring awareness to it. It's something that's touched me. I'm a resident over at Indian Acres and I've noticed rate hikes. So I just thought I'd kind of go over stuff that I've noticed, but it seems like this has been talked a lot here. So I'll just go over some points that I came up with. I might be really phone reliant because I don't have much time to prepare, so please forgive me. So I'm going to go over four points. So accountability for engineering failures, excessive rate burdens on families, lack of oversight and transparency, and finding solutions to solve this problem. So first, going over accountability for engineering. So there were two major engineering mistakes that cost Georgetown residents $15 million, which is the rate increases that we'll be paying over the years. And so, and also the water treatment plant redesigned due to engineering flaws. And then in a 2019 rate study, it contained critical calculation errors causing these rate hikes that we are seeing today. And I believe that as residents, we shouldn't have to be paying for these engineers' mistakes. They should be held accountable for their errors. And then also the excessive rate burdens on families. Everyone here knows the economy is not doing well, and any extra burden on top of that is just a burden, you know, too far. So 84.7, or excuse me, 84.7% compound interest rate over six years is unprecedented. Bills increasing from $26 to potentially $36 or more. I've seen 40 plus on some bills of friends and even myself. And you're forcing families to choose between utilities or basic necessities. It's disproportionately impacting seniors, some who can't be here tonight to represent themselves, so I'm here for them. And also single parents and working families. Third point, lack of oversight and transparency. So the rate increases implemented with minimal public input, and there's no clear plan to prevent future engineering disasters on any add-ons to the water treatment plan. We deserve regular rate reviews and public accountability, and we need independent oversight of these major infrastructure projects and engineering plans. So what are some solutions we can seek? I'm looking to seek state and federal grants to offset these engineering mistakes so that the burden is off the citizens and into the hands of the people that made these mistakes. I'm looking for legal action against the responsible consultants, and I want to implement gradual increases instead of massive jumps. And lastly, something I would like to see happen is to create hardship assistance programs for vulnerable residents who this has negatively impacted. for vulnerable residents who this has negatively impacted. Thank you, council members, and thanks for hearing me.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else who needs to address that was on the list? Thank you. All right, on mayor's comments, uh, first thing, want to talk about mayor's comments. And I'll try to be brief. I know we got a few things tonight that want to cover some information, which I think this, this, the citizens of this community will need to hear as well as this council. One, I want to really address the passing of Lieutenant Martin Collins, who, uh, as most of you are probably, probably did know in 1986, when she brought in Toyota, it changed the landscape of this community. And, you know, I know some people look at it as maybe not so as, as others, but she was really a champion for workforce development and she really, uh, was the influential person who got Toyota to come here. And you're talking about one of the, uh, the largest, uh, manufact- car manufacturing of, for Toyota in the, in the world. So I had an opportunity to view that when I was over in, in Japan looking at theirs and the, what they have there and here is almost a nice model of that. But we have about 11,000, uh, workers there at that, this plant here. So she was very instrumental in getting that done. So, um, and I just want to let this community know that, um, the appreciation of her hard work to making this happen and because there is benefits that we're getting today because of our action done in 1986. I got Eddie here with me tonight, uh, want to talk a little bit about the, uh, had a meeting about the, uh, the flooding, uh, floodplain area. And, uh, I couldn't go to that meeting, but Eddie went there and just kind of give you a little bit overview what that is and Eddie, uh, kind of chime in if I don't catch everything. But this, the flooding, it talks about floodplains of, of this particular, of the county and state, uh, and especially in Georgetown. The idea of it was to actually put, put it on a state map of all the floodplains in this particular area. And what this does is it, it lets people know, like the developers know, make sure they're not building a floodplain area, as well as letting some of the, uh, citizens know if, when they're going to be buying property, that they're not buying something in the, uh, floodplain area. Also, uh, because of this report that we did, we actually shared, uh, what we are doing over here on, on Broadway. We shared that report with them, what we're doing here with the state. So Eddie, I'll let you chime in and cover anything else I missed.
Yeah, you, you pretty well covered everything. The state's, uh, really upping their, um, their mapping, the flood mapping to show the people, you know, where, um, where the flood areas are across the whole state. And, uh, and we're used to seeing FEMA flood maps on the major tributaries on, you know, on the Alcorn, for example, here in Georgetown. But this has expanded to, uh, a lot of the other smaller streams that also experienced bank flooding. Um, and they're, they're, they wanted to share with the communities and ask us to provide them any data that we may have. And we did that, we shared, uh, as mayor's pointed out, we shared the, uh, report we did at the Royal Springs Basin with them and they were appreciative of that. So, um, they wanted to bring us up to speed and ask for any information, let us know. And it will all be made available to the public, but it's still under development, so.
Thank you Eddie.
Yes, sir.
So much for that. And then of course, I think, uh, Councilman Hampton, I think they talked to you about the shrubs and fence line. Uh, that was actually done by the HOA in that community and not the state. And I think the state's kind of tied up. So if they can't get that done, I think we're going to try to pitch it and help get that done for you. All right. You're welcome. Let's move on, uh, council reports, committee reports, uh, police committee. Mr. Menke?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So the police committee met, uh, on Monday last week, the 3rd of, of November at our regular meeting. Uh, all of our members were present. Uh, the first item we, we talked about was staffing. Uh, that's a, an ongoing activity that we talk about. Given the retirements and promotions, uh, within the department, um, it's, it, it's a, an area that they have to always be looking at. Uh, current staff level 68 of our, um, police officers. There are five candidates in the process and three in the, in the academy right now. They've also started testing on six more, uh, candidates for POPS testing, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So they began that process as well. So it's an ongoing activity there to try and, um, keep our police force at its optimum level. Uh, also because of changes at the dispatch area, uh, there are six in the interview pool there as well and those are proceeding, uh, well and hopefully we'll be able to, uh, see some results to get the staff at dispatch up to, uh, up to par as well. The, the other item that we talked about, um, you know, again, the uh, emergency personnel, uh, the, the stress levels and things like that are really important to monitor. And so we talked about a, a new data management system, flagging system, that gives some early warning indicators. So if there's some trends and things like that to be able to help with, uh, health benefits and things like that, to make sure that we have a, a sound, uh, officer responding and, and we're dealing with their individual needs as well as the community needs there. So some, some new, uh, new information that we may be talking with the council about in the future. The, uh, the next item that we did talk about, I was really excited about, was the teen driver training, uh, that the traffic unit had put together. Uh, this is to help the, the teens to be able to know what is a traffic stop and what are the things you should be doing and, and basically things that, um, I think a lot of students or, or young drivers are not getting because we don't have that program in the school systems here. And so that was very successful, two rounds, 24 student, or 25 students each, uh, with great reviews. And we're looking at trying to see if we can incorporate that somehow into the school systems to broaden that. So, uh, stay tuned for that as well. The other thing that I know there's a lot of, um, effort being made, we're tracking data at the police department for those collision areas and other areas of crime and things like that. So they're targeting traffic units and things like that in the various areas around this, the community to ensure that we're addressing those needs. And there's some pretty impressive statistics there in terms of the results of people slowing down to prevent those collisions that we have at those high impact areas. And as a result of that, finding a number of issues. Out on I-75, for instance, with federal overtime dollars, they've been able to spend some time out there trying to reduce speed and, and traffic, uh, going up and down the interstates. And so you may have seen on the Facebook, if you're not on Georgetown PD's Facebook, they are publicing, publicizing a lot of the things that are going on there. So you'll see a lot of drugs and weapon confiscations because of traffic stops and things like that that are making our community a safer place. So I would urge you, if you haven't been checking out that Facebook, to, uh, to do that occasionally. The, uh, the last item that I'll cover, mayor, is just, uh, in preparation for the, the study on the needs assessment for the police department and dispatch, uh, I was able to go through and, and observe both of those areas. And if there are other folks that would love to do that, I'm sure they can make arrangements. We all can't go at one time because of space limitations and things like that. But it really is eye-opening on the conditions that we're, we're asking our folks to operate in. And so there's a needs assessment that you know that is underway now, uh, hopefully soon to be able to review that and then look at maybe some steps that we need to take within the next capital budget considerations. So I would encourage you to, to look at that as well. And I believe that was all that we covered at that meeting. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next item number nine is the presentation of the property valuation administrator PVA, Mr. John Burrow. And he's here to talk a little bit about the, uh, property assessment portion of that, how they, the process, how you go about assessing property. And that's what, that's where his lane is and that's where he comes up.
That's right, stay in your lane. All right, thank you, uh, Mayor Jenkins, uh, council members. Uh, thank you for the invite tonight. What a perfect time because tax bills just went out. So, you know, I took this, uh, office, uh, 2023, Tim Jenkins retired, and I was fortunate enough to, uh, pass the state exam and, uh, and run and, and become the PVA. As soon as I did, the old Department of Revenue handed me this book and it's, it's basically my bible. So it's all, all the tax laws, everything that I have to hereby for my job, for the duties of my office. I read this three or four times when I got it. I'll read it every single year before January 1st, uh, as I'm going into the next reassessment period. So there are two things that stood out in this book that I wanted to read to everybody to start with. All right, this is probably the most important. It's in its, uh, chapter one, it's the first paragraph. So this is here, the primary duty of the property value administrator is to, uh, fairly assess value of real property and personal property listed by taxpayers in his or her community. The constitution of Kentucky requires that all property that's not exempted from taxation by this constitution shall be assessed for taxation at its fair cash value, estimated what it would bring at a fair cr- fair cash value at a voluntary sale. It goes on to say that, uh, property is to be assessed at 100% of its fair cash value. Okay, and that was actually mandated under a, uh, court case, uh, Russman versus Luckett, 1965. So right there says, all properties to be assessed at 100% of its fair cash value. That's law. The second thing that a lot of people give this one, uh, incorrect. So I've had individuals come in and say, hey, you can't move my property but once every four years, the value. That's not correct. So here it says, the property value administrator is required by law to physically examine each parcel of taxable real property, no less than once every four years, but to revalue all real property annually. So the four years is an inventory. So I'm here for four-year cycle. I have to send a list to Department of Revenue right at the beginning of my term and tell them how I'm going to go out and look at 25,000 parcels that are in Sky County. It's a daunting task. Uh, my staff is limited and, uh, we're doing this more and more through technology, aerial flights, things like it. So that's, that's, that's the first key to this. Now I'm going to read off and just, th- this is all black and white. It's just the, the tax calendar, what I'm supposed to go through, uh, to, to meet these requirements. But I'm gonna, I'm also going to tell you some of the gray areas in this, you know? I'm not AI. So I'm able to make some, uh, some judgments just through, uh, you know, just common sense when, when I'm applying this. Again, I, I'm not trying to get everybody to that 100% mark because that's impossible. This market is moving way faster than I can keep up with. But I do need to try to get them where everybody is, is, is fairly equitable assessed. Everybody's paying their fair share. Now what's that mean? Well, you all have a budget, okay? And, and your, 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 your budget mandates that you're allowed to start out each fiscal year with at least the exact same amount that you had last year. Your expenses are not going down, they're going up, okay? So let's just bring this down to, to simple terminology. Your budget's $2. I got two houses, they're, they're both the same. And each one, after you set your tax rate, you get a dollar from each, each of those two houses. That's it. I've met my requirement, you all met yours, you've got your $2 budget. What if I wasn't doing my job and one of those houses is not fairly assessed? Now you're sending out your tax bill, one of them pays 50 cents, the other one pays $1.50 because you're entitled to your budget, two bucks, somebody just overpaid. That's why I have to try to keep everybody as equal as possible, that is my job. Now doing that, it's based off of sales. There's, there's three approaches to assessing property. First one is, uh, sales, that's the most common for, for residential property and houses. I study that every year and we have probably about 2,500 deeds or more every year where properties transfer. Now I'll get that question there too that, uh, well, you can't use a brand new house, well, we don't. Everything is coded. We read every single deed. If it's a brand new house, it receives a different code than it, than a, what we would call it arms-length transaction. That's where somebody's in an existing house, it's already sold a couple of times before, they're just selling it to the next person at much greater value and then we go, that, that's a Z, that's a good sale. That's the only ones we use in the study. Everything else, different codes. We want to pull them out, out of that, uh, study because we don't want to overassess, but don't want to underassess. Yeah? Uh, so that's, that's how that works. Then, then you have like your, uh, the other two is obviously cost, house burns down, what would it cost to replace it? Like I was telling, uh, Mike up there, you know, like my dad's house, he bought it in 1964, he paid $18,000 for it. If his house burned down, would it cost 18,000 to put his house back? Absolutely not. So that, that's also an indicator of, of value. So I look at cost. And then the third is income stream. That's your, that's your commercial property. Uh, so that, I'm really good with, with the income stream and commercial property. So that, that would be like where you have like, uh, let's say an apartment complex. I'm going to look at that apartment complex, I'm going to say it's got X amount of units, they're getting X amount of rent per month. I'm going to say apartments times this amount equals an annual assessment or a value and I'm going to put a cap rate to it. That's going to tell me what investor is going to pay for that, that, that property. So that's the third, that's the third component. So here's the tax calendar. So every year, as of January 1st, I literally have to look at all property, what is there and what's the condition of it and who owns it for reassessment. And then I go into, uh, which is not on here, that's when I go into my assessment mode. I'm looking at last year's sales. So I'm already looking at old data to be conservative. And then I'm studying it and I'm determining how far off I was from my assessment for what they're selling for. I have to send that data to the state, they, they look at it and, uh, they run their own assessment levels and they tell me, based off of how far I missed, how much I've got to add back on to get it, to get that range tighter again. I'm here, we're selling here, all right, I got to get it up to here. I got to get it about that 90 so I can be fair and equitable. There's a formula called, uh, it's a COD, it's a, it's a big old, big old word, coefficient of dispersion. So what I'm looking for is once I do my reassessment, that I've pulled everybody back into a tighter range, hopefully within a 10, which is 10%. I don't want to be at a 12, I don't want to be at 20 because it's, it's unequal now. So I'm constantly trying to pull everybody back in. That's the formula. And again, I look at sales to do that. So after the listing or the assessment date starts on January 1st, we go into the listing period, which basically is January 1st through March 1st. That's when anybody who owns property in Sky County can come in and just list their property. You're supposed to tell me, you're actually supposed to come and tell me what you have, whether you've made any changes, you built a new building, you took something down. Most time it doesn't happen, so the other half of that equation is, I got to go out and find it, I'm looking for it. Thank goodness we have a really good P and Z. Thank goodness we have good building inspection and, and permits. A lot of counties don't have that, that they're missing a lot of stuff off their tax row. Then that makes it where everybody else is paying unfair share of taxes. Once all that's done, once I've reassessed, if I have moved your value even a penny, you're going to get a tax bill notice. That goes out the same time every single year. So this, this tax calendar is no different than like your, everybody knows when to file your, your, for your, uh, your federal tax returns, April 15th. Personal property, May 15th. So nothing changes here, so that's another one when they say, well, I, I didn't get my notice, I didn't know. It's the same every year. You can go on the state site, my website, it's, it's, it's right here in black and white. So again, once all that's done, you get your notice, then we go into what they call the inspection period. That's where, uh, it starts the first Monday in May, it's for 13 days, it's a window, two Saturdays involved, I've got to work two Saturdays out of the year. That's where you can come in and talk to me about your assessment notice, the value I've moved you at. And that's where we can look at and go, all right, is there a condition issue that maybe I should rethink this? Because again, I'm just doing a, 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 a massive appraisal where I'm just moving everybody at once because I'm doing a lot of properties. If there is something where I can work with you or pull it back down maybe a little bit, do that. Okay, again, not AI. If it's AI, they wouldn't do that. Once we get through that period, then the next step would be is, if, uh, if we didn't agree on a, on a number and I feel like I couldn't help you, well, I still owe it to all the other taxpayers to, to leave you where you're at. I can't just be dropping it because you just, you're upset. I, I can't do that, I'm being unfair to everybody else. So that's when I would advise somebody to go through the appeal process and that usually takes place about mid-June. And, uh, there's where you would sit in front of a panel of, of your peers. Typically it's a, it's a realtor, it's an appraiser, uh, maybe a banker, but anybody with, with really good knowledge of, of the real estate market. Those individuals are appointed by, one of them by the mayor of the largest city and, and, uh, that case would be Mayor and that case would be Mayor Jenkins for City Georgetown of the county. One is appointed one year by the judge executive, and then another one by the magistrate. So it's a panel of three people, one rotates on, one rotates off. As a matter of fact, Mr. Jenkins, it's your turn this year, so I'll get with you on that. You've got to appoint somebody again. I know, I know. But once all that is done, then I send off a recap to the state. That's when they look at it, and they determine, "All right, John, you've hit all your numbers, we're good with this." And that's when they certify. So again, I'm the first piece to this puzzle. Now, I'm actually not technically the tax guy, I'm the value guy. But once that's done, then I turn that data over to all the taxing districts. At your state, at your county, at your cities, Georgetown, Stamp and Ground, Sadieville, actually Corinth. I have four properties I have to look at that sit on this side of the border, and Corinth, I have to turn that data over to them. But when you have that data and the tax row has been certified, that's when you all have to look at your budget, whatever your annual revenue was for the year before, and make determination, "Do I only need again the same amount this year? Or do I need 4% more, which you're allowed to do by law? Or you can actually take a little bit more, but if you do that, then you're subject to recall." Same thing with every taxing district because you also have the school in there, you have the library, the extension office, the health department, okay? And it goes for each and every one of them. I want to note, Scott County, it is growing at a phenomenal rate. I was looking at some numbers the other day. You know, individuals will ask me sometimes, like, "This has got to stop, I don't understand how my value keeps going up." This comes right down to, it's supply and demand. If you don't have enough supply of something, and you have a huge demand, the price of the unit or product, or in this case, land, housing, it's going to go up. You know, so I was looking at some data, I love data. The world population, let's just start there. When I was born in 1964, the population of the entire world rounded up as 3.3 billion people, that's it. That's only been 61 years. We are now at 8.1 billion. In 15 more years, we'll be at 9 billion. So within my lifetime, Earth's population has tripled, okay? Earth hasn't gotten any larger, guys. That's an issue. We don't make any more land. You pull it down to Scott County, Scott County is 285 square miles. It's not getting any larger. 2010, I read that our population was 400, or 47,000 people. We're now at 62. We grew by 25% in 15 years. That is unbelievable. We are the fastest-growing county in the state of Kentucky. I don't envy any of your jobs because you're all going to have to do some strategic planning to manage this growth. The price of housing is not going down. It's not, it's going to get worse. You know? Last year, I think I read that, or I saw that there were over 1,000 permits were pulled. It's half of that this year. It's not because of the markets, because we don't have enough, we don't have enough land that's been developed, ready to put homes on. It's dropping. What's that going to do to the price of property and homes? It's going up, it's going up, so. So just some other quick stats. So again, as of right now, we have 25,401 parcels in the county. That's grown by 1,100 parcels since I took office. It was 24.3 when I took office, just a little less than three years ago. Of that 25,400 properties, there's four classes of property. One is residential, so around 20,000 now is residential. Of farm, there's right now 33.53 of commercial property, a little over 1,000. The rest is exempt property. Now, when I say exempt, so that's going to be like your churches, federal state buildings, things like that. They do not pay property taxes. Now, I do have to put a value on those, there's a reason for that. For every dollar that is deferred off the tax road, it's got to be made up by a taxpayer. So like, I think that gentleman made a remark about the senior citizens. You know, right now, there's a homestead where if you're 65 years or older, lived in your house, you get a reduction, right now it's $49,100 off, whatever your assessed value is. Problem is that is, that changes every two years, it's by CPI. It's not much when it changes. The value of property is going through the roof at a faster pace. It's moving probably 8% to 10% a year, so it doesn't help much. That's the one, when I get the phone call from the senior citizen that's retired, their income's not increasing through their social security, those type of things. And that's the tough one for me because I have to follow this law. Now, I'm conservative with what I'm doing, but I have to follow this law. There's no way I can get out of this. So that's a struggle. So even if we try to do more for them, which actually I've been talking with our association and some of our senators, congressmen, what I'd like to see is that we actually at 65, we freeze our assessment, okay? Just do away with that flat, that doesn't help. Now, there's got to be stipulations on that. If you freeze it, it needs to be unfroze if it's sold, or if they decide to pull a permit, "Hey, I'm going to build another house on my property." Well, we're going to have to unfreeze and add that on. You can't just do that, stay at that other value. But what we have to realize is, whenever we make moves like that to help somebody, that's a positive, you're going to create a negative over here because you get $2. And if I take it from this guy, you just added it on to every other taxpayer, okay? So those are the things you always have to think about when you're dealing with the tax-deferred property. That's not the only thing that's deferred. Obviously, that's for the senior citizens. You also have it where disability, if you're disabled, veterans, something like that, they also get that same exemption, only one, either or. So if they're getting the disability as a vet, let's say, but when they turn 65, we take this one off and just put them under the other one. Reason for that is disability, you have to apply for every single year and keep proving through those letters that you receive that you're disabled. Once you turn 65, you're not going to get any younger, so we'll flip to that where you don't have to keep coming into the office anymore. So then you have, again, the fully tax-exempt properties, like I said, the churches. And then you have the partial exemptions, which like I said, is the homestead disabilities, and there's ag exemption, and that gives you a break on the land, the land only, not the improvements on top of the land. That's a large break. But all of that deferred money is made up by every other taxpayer who does not receive any form of exemption. So always keep that in mind. You know, the other thing when I took the office, which, you know, after going, I go to a lot of classes, one of the things that really went and thought about, you know, our, the state of Kentucky has been plagued by many disasters in the last few years. We've had a lot of flooding, tornadoes out west, a lot of damage. But one thing to realize, a lot of the PVAs in the past, like let's say a church, well, they're not paying tax on it, I care less, I don't have time to fool with that. Well, they weren't keeping the values at the proper levels they need to be. So let's say I had a church that's a million-dollar church, but it was only on at $100,000, it got hit by a tornado, and then FEMA comes in, they're going to give them $100,000. They're not going to give them a million dollars. So that's another reason why it's extremely important that all the exempt property and our other property, your homes, are on it at a fair equitable value, what they're supposed to be at 100%, because if there's ever a natural disaster, FEMA rolls in here, they're coming to my office. It needs to be right. So I painstakingly, my first year, submitted letters to the county, to the city, to churches, asking for all their insured information so I could get that right. We weren't even near. So again, very important that I do this and do it like I'm supposed to by the book. The other thing I want to mention is, I'm a taxpayer, you know? I've lived here my entire life. You know, be a PVA, you know, obviously you got to pass that test, you got to live in Kentucky for two years, resident of your county for one. Well, I've lived here my entire life. My parents were from here, my grandparents were from here. They paid their share of taxes, I've been paying mine since I bought a house when I was 28 years old. I hate the word taxes. You know, guys, this is a community. I know it seems expensive to people, but our money goes for a shared service, and it's services that make this the community that it is. It pays for our police power, pays for our fire department. I hear the sirens every day. Do I think it's a bad thing when I know that they're running off to save a neighbor, maybe a family member is on his way home that I don't even know that's hurt yet? My money is well spent. Same thing with our school system, you know? When I went to school, somebody paid for me to go to school, okay? Now I'm older, it's my turn to pony up and pay back, you know? It's just part of being a community. You know, I can go out, you know, somebody told me the other day, "Health department, what do I need the health department for? You go eat, don't you? I'm pretty sure they go in and inspect the restaurants, make sure they're clean. Pretty sure they go out and look at the sewer systems, the septic tanks, and approve that." They do everything, every department does so many things, we just don't even have a clue. But that's where our money goes, it's money well spent. So I just want to leave it there. If, you know, at any time, if any of you all have any questions for my office, I have a spectacular staff, you know, really love the community, want to help anybody at any time. We get a ton of calls of just about various things. I have a spectacular website, it is transparent. You can go there and look at your property, your value, your neighbor's value. You can see that we're fair and equitable there. I guess that's about all I have, so. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Anybody got any questions? Yes?
Just a comment. John, on your website, I just want to say thank you for that website because it is a wealth of information. When we're doing planning and those kinds of things, being able to go in and look up properties and things like that, that is not something that many communities offer, especially for free. Don't get any ideas.
No, no, no.
But that is a service, and it's really important because from a planning perspective and looking into the future, it really provides a lot of information, so thank you for that.
I appreciate that, Kim. You know, it's great for economic development. I mean, somebody across the world can pull up Scott County and start looking to see if they want to bring a business here. I mean, it is free. You're right, there are a lot of PVAs, you know, Kentucky's made up 120 counties, there's 120 PVAs. Some of them are small, they don't have the budget that I have, and they're not able to provide that. They actually charge for their sites, trying to just, you know, to keep the lights on and, you know? It's kind of sad. A lot of them don't have, like I said earlier, they don't have planning and zoning, they don't have, you know, permitting. It's, I can't imagine trying to work now under those type of conditions and keep up with what's going on in Kentucky. They're struggling, you know?
All right, any other questions?
I've got a few, I'll try and keep them quick. Yeah, all right. Can you explain the comp rate and kind of how that is set? And what that means sort of in the grand scheme of things with the PVA?
The compensation rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So back to, you know, your three options. Your first one is, you have a set amount or a budget, okay? So as I assess, and the value's growing, it's simple math. Once I have the total value, then you just divide the amount that you need for your budget into that, and it gives you your tax rate. So compensation rate is, you're not taking any more money, so you're actually, the rate's going to drop because as I'm growing the value, you're taking that same amount of money, and that rate drops. That's it, that's the compensation rate. You can take your 4%. So you take whatever your money is, for every dollar, you're going to add $4, or 4, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, 40 cents. Once you have that new figure, then you divide it to my value. Now meanwhile, meanwhile, we're growing at such a pace, you're still even going to be lowering your rate. I mean, I'm growing probably 8% or better a year. So if you take 4%, it's still going to drop. And then again, that last option, you can take more than, you know, but then you're subject to recall, so.
Okay. How much is the agricultural exemption? And do farmers or landowners have to do anything special to qualify for that?
It's based off soil class value, so there's actually a study done once every four years, and they base that off of rent rates for the soil class classes. There's eight classes, one through eight, one being the absolute best property you got. So basically, it means if you're farming it, you can toil the land every single year, doesn't even have to rest. Then class two starts, it's where it starts dropping off, class two. You would toil it three years, you'd let it rest a year, and then so on and so on. And once you start getting down in that four, five, six, that's where you start going, let's say, like North Scott County, that's where it starts getting more hilly, that's more of your wooded area, still has rentable value, but it's your timber, it's hunting, it's things like that. But we do a soil class overlay, so let's say you have 100 acres, then we'll turn on that soil class layer over that 100 acres, and it'll give me the calculation of maybe 20 acres is that class one, and 20 is class three. But it'll all total up to that 100 acres. And then that rent value that they've assigned to those classes, the computer just does the math. It's kind of an AI. It just says, "This amount of acreage of this soil class is this rent value, here's the value." Once it's through, it adds it all up. Here's what you're going to pay on that ag-exempt value on the land only for the year. It's a huge, huge break. You know, I was talking to somebody today, I mean, you could have like a 10-acre tract or a little over 10 acres, you could have more than 10 acres, and the tract could be worth $300,000, but you might be paying off $3,000 bucks. It's huge. Again, but that's tax-deferred. Rest of us are paying for that to try to help protect farmland. And that was designed, when they created that, it was tried to keep farmers from being forced from selling their properties, from corporations coming in to, "Hey, let's hope they can't pay their taxes, let's buy that land for a little nothing, let's turn it into housing." So, I mean, that's what it's for.
Okay. The appeals process, how successful are people when they come to do that? And more importantly, I was kind of wondering on this, is there a certain kind of property or a certain neighborhood in town or any certain characteristics you see a lot of? Like every year, you're like, "Yeah, we're going to see some people from this neighborhood or this type of house."
The majority that really goes upstairs is really corporations. It's, well, I'll just name them, I'm not shy from it. In the past, since I've been doing it, I have been in some appeals with Krogers, Lowe's, for one. It's just, they're about profit, they try to nickel and dime, save where they can, and I fight these guys. If I don't think that it should be lowered, I don't lower it, you know? I do have a handful of residences, but typically during the inspection period, when I talk to them and I show them the sales, what's going on, they typically just say, "You know what, I get it, I understand, you know, I didn't even know it was worth that much." There are such a minute handful that will go upstairs, and, you know, they're angry, you know? I just, I work with them the best I can, but it comes to a point where I can't move. I advise you to take it upstairs, let's three other people listen to it, and if they think I'm wrong, or, you know, let them decide, kind of take it out of my hands. Honestly, Michael, it's rare, I've never lost anything upstairs because most of the time, it's based off factual data. I walk in, I have my data. Here's what's selling, here's where I'm at, I'm low. These guys are realtors, they're, you know, appraisers, they know. And then when somebody sits down and they don't have that data, because you have to have factual data. Do you have an appraisal? No. I just think I'm overtaxed. That's not good enough. You better have your ducks in a row when you go upstairs, you know?
Before the meeting, we were talking about a quick example. If you, if 10 years ago, a developer came in and built a house, or built a street of 10 brand-new homes, and all of them sold at the same time for $300,000, and that was their assessed value, if over the, and you're at the end of that street, you've got one of these $300,000 homes 10 years ago. If in the last year or two, two or three of the neighbors get offers and sell theirs for $400,000, because of the comps that you guys use, your assessed value is probably going to go up quite a bit thanks to your neighbors doing pretty well on their sales, right?
Once I do my study, again, I've got a window, I've got some leeway. So again, that's that gray area, common sense. You know, the state would love me to, if they're selling for 400, and I've got them at 300, they want them at 400,000, every one of them. But, you know, I got some leeway, I got that 10% window. So there they would go to like 360, maybe, 90% of that value. I'm just trying to wiggle them up. That's a huge chunk, but it's not 400,000, you know? And that's the thing with this, I'm constantly chasing these values. You know, it's amazing that, like, right now, I'm getting ready to go into my, we're working 2026 right now. So this year, I'm wrapping up my four-year quad. I'm concentrating on commercial property and some farms, but that's my inventory. I still got to reassess everybody. Now, that doesn't mean, it doesn't mean your value is actually going to go up. It's just, I have to look at everything, I have to determine whether I'm going to move a value or not. So. So, it could go up, it could stay the same, you could lower. You know, last year, of those 25,000 parcels, 18,500 went up, I think I had a couple thousand that dropped, and I had about 3,000 or 4,000 that stayed the same, you know. But they typically go up based off of those sales. I mean, it's, you know, so again, they're selling, I'm moving, and it's amazing that from January 1st to March, when I'm moving these, they're still selling, and I've just moved them, and they're still selling for way more than what I put them at. It's, the percentage of something selling for less than, it's minute, if I do see it, which is rare, it's a house that there was either a major condition issue, somebody passed, they were never calling in on, something like that. You know, but it almost never, ever happens, that something sells for what I've got it on at, or less. It just doesn't happen.
Gotcha. Well, my last question, nobody likes getting our property tax bills when they come in, but what do we have to do to get them perforated? Because nobody likes taking those scissors out and having to cut. Cardboard's so tough.
Now, you'd have to talk to sheriff's office, because I don't know who their vendor is, who prints those for them. But keep in mind, you know, again, you know, we work with all the agencies here, the sheriff's office, and of course, you all have your own vendor, whoever prints your bills, mails those out, and then you all collect. So, again, I'm the value guy, and then you all do the rest. But again, I'm the first piece of the puzzle. Does what I do affect the value in your taxes? Absolutely. I'm not gonna say it doesn't. It does.
All right. Okay, thank you, John, so much for that information.
All right.
Appreciate that very much. So now we know how about how we get assessed tax-wise. All right. Let's move right on. Next is the, our next item, number 10, City Hall renovation project update. And we have them here to bring that up. And if you all, again, I know some of you have been here before, there's probably some people that know who you are that's listening out there, so if you all, again, introduce yourself, re-introduce yourself to new ones, okay?
Hi, everybody, I'm Elizabeth Hunt with Lord X Sergeant, the project manager for the project.
And I'm Kay Sedwell with Codell, the site superintendent.
Mike, Stacy, Codell.
Um, so we are here tonight, obviously, to give you guys an update, and if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any time. I think you guys know me well enough by now to know that I will just start zooming through this, so feel free to put your hand up and ask me any questions. Next slide. Um, just a project overview, sort of by the numbers. Again, we have 146 requests for information, just a few more than last time. We are ticking over so slightly up to towards 200 on the submittals. I don't think we're gonna quite hit it, but we'll see. Um, since our last meeting, we have also released three additional architect supplemental instructions. Two of those were clarifications based on inspectors' comments from the state inspector being on-site, and one was to address a clarification from the owner requested access controls. And we have not had any new bulletins for a while, so nothing new to report on there. Next slide. Changes to the scope of work. I believe when we were here last time, change orders 11, 12, and 13, or 12 and 13? I can't remember which, no. Okay. Um, they were under approval. Everything has now been approved. So, at the meeting, we were not here, you all reviewed and approved change orders 12 and 13 for restoring the arched window in what will be the city clerk's office, as well as replacing the deteriorated wood and metal at the second-floor bay window. Next slide. Moving into the general update on the exterior. Um, on the front elevation, you can see that we have the windows back in the mayor's office on the third floor. Uh, all of the roof and metal cornice work is complete. The new decorative attic vent has been installed, and we have started some site work out front. On the rear elevation, you can see that we have the stair tower enclosure going up, with a little close-up of how those panels sort of work at the corner. It's going up very nicely. Next slide. Moving to the interior, starting on the ground floor. Um, on the lower right photo, it's sort of down the hallway, so you can see where we're starting to get all of the drywall in place and getting it finished. All the spaces, which for the most part are sort of back-of-house and service spaces on the ground floor, um, so they aren't overly decorative in nature anyway, but those spaces are starting to finish out. Next slide. Moving up to the first floor, again, as you look down the hallway, you can see that we have drywall finishing going on. Um, the arched window that is in the city clerk's office, those sashes have been taken out, and they are back at the, is it BJB?
They're installed as of today.
Okay, see, this is what happens when you take photos of Thursday of last week, and then there's more work that goes on. Um, those were being restored, they are now back in place, so stay tuned for more photos. Um, and then the photo all the way to the left is the council lounge, which is getting ceilings, the ceiling. I need to start taking photos the day of I'm here, apparently, because things are moving very quickly. Next slide. Moving into the council chambers, is that ceiling in now?
Yes.
There you go. So, this space, again, is moving along with getting finished. We have floors to do, I think that is probably the major thing left in council chambers. Next slide. Moving up to the second floor, so last time, we showed you the floors that had been refinished. Those have now been covered to protect them, so you can't see those quite as well in these photos, but what you can see is the glass office fronts that have been installed. Um, so you can see how much light is really gonna come in through those to the interior of that space now. Next slide. And these are just source and detail shots of those offices, and kind of what that will look like, both from inside and outside the office. Next slide. We have also been able to get into what will be the meeting room on the second floor, so that space is getting finished out. Next slide. Moving up to the third floor, um, all of the new wood floors are in, and I believe those were refinished over the weekend. So, see, I don't have any photo of that yet either, but stay tuned. Um, but you can see how, just the dramatic change in this space, and what that looks like. Um, next slide. The skylights will really let a lot of light into that interior space. Um, it's a really great, big volume, and really nice space to be in. Although I understand I am biased, but. Next slide. Um, again, that photo on the right is sort of looking at that connection through, to the interior, or I'm sorry, to the rear stair enclosure, where we brought that up to the third floor. Um, and then the photo on the left is just kind of looking back across the space as a whole. Next slide. The structural stabilization in the mayor's office has been completed. Um, all the steel is in, everything is ready to go, those windows have gone back in. Um, this space was being used for staging for the refinishing of the floor, so that has all been moved now elsewhere. Next slide. Um, so that you can see, from the outside, the little round plates is really all that you will see from the exterior, from that stabilization, and those will be painted to match the stone, as close as we can get to that stone. That is a very odd color. Next slide. The waterproofing has been completed at the front, so everything was excavated. I think the last time we were here, you all got to see a photo of the baked giant pit. Um, all of the waterproofing has been applied to the stone on the front facade. Um, everything was refilled, and it is much drier inside now on the ground floor. Um, those walls will continue to dry out over the next few months, which is one of the reasons that we're leaving them exposed, is to really let them dry. Um, but it has made a big difference down there. Next slide. So, cost impact update. Um, with the change orders that were approved at your last meeting, um, we now have a change order cost to date of $451,380.96, which leaves $323,660.29 in the contingency. Um, so again, that final GMP remains at that, close to 12.5 million. There have been no added costs to the project, it has all come out of the contingency. And then next slide. Upcoming tasks. Um, when we were doing the structural stabilization of the mayor's office, our structural engineers were on-site observing the work being done, so that they could make adjustments if needed. When the work, and you guys feel free to jump in, since you were there every day. When the work started, the structural engineer felt like there needed to be some additional shoring to really make sure, as that hammering into the stone for the connections, just to really ensure that nothing was going to come off the building. Am I understating anything?
And like in your window columns and stuff, it was just to ensure that the stone didn't crack, um, just keeping as much as the exterior facade intact, um, while also protecting anybody walking underneath, or anything of that nature, so.
At that time, it was also observed that, particularly in those spaces in between the windows, that all of those metal ties that tied the stone back to the building had deteriorated. Um, and there was not a lot holding that stone back onto the building. So, the structural engineer recommended tying that back with helical ties that basically drill through the front of the stone and tie back into the building. So, those are two changes that sort of happened during the course of the stabilization that we will be getting pricing on. Um, I don't believe we have received it yet.
Um, we've still gotta work through the credits, and then the railing and stuff.
Right. So, so then the additional item on the, on pricing, there were some stair rail modifications. On the interior stair, the existing one, we ended up not having to replace one of the railings that was sort of full height. So, there'll be a credit for that, since we did not have to replace it. In addition, when the state inspector was on-site, where we have a portion of a window, because we opened those windows back up in the stair tower, and the stair landing sort of crosses a portion of those windows for like 11 inches, but because there is an opening, the inspector wants a small railing of some kind in there to make sure that nobody could put a foot through, or hurt themselves. So, there'll be a trade-off there, but we are getting that pricing as well. Um, as far as upcoming tasks, it's really continuing with everything that you're seeing on-site. Continuing with the window installation, continuing with the enclosure at the stair tower, installing finishes, interior doors, glass office walls, light fixtures. Um, the site work will continue at both the rear and the front of the building, complete the utility work in the alley, and then begin recoding of the existing metal, anything that's sort of left on the front facade that was not, that didn't need to be replaced, but will be recoded. Simultaneous to this, um, there is a task going on that is being run through the city's risk manager's office. So, we are helping to facilitate that, but it is not added scope or cost to this project. Um, there is some remediation in the mezzanine above the mayor's office, um, which was a pre-existing condition prior to this project, with some animals being in there. Um, when the mezzanine, we had planned some work in the mezzanine as part of this project as an alternate. The alternate was not accepted, so all of the work for the mezzanine was then not included. Um, there is some remediation that needs to happen up there, and like I said, that's being run through the city's risk manager's office. Anything else?
No, I gotta get before you all talk schedule.
Sure. Um, just to reiterate that piece, so that mezzanine portion was not accepted as an alternate. Thankfully, able to flag this as a concern, animals, animal waste, some environmental-type concerns. So, we've worked pretty quickly, and the design team has worked with the historic tax credit folks to make sure that any of that work and removal of that ceiling material is not going to jeopardize the tax credits. We've gotten confirmation that they're in support of the plan that we're taking to remediate that. Um, in the interest of that, not creating, you know, part of the impetus for this project was air quality and other health-related concerns. So, that work will be going on very soon, um, and we've got that covered through the city independently of this contract, but did want to address that, because the work will be happening parallel to the work that they've described tonight. Um, the other thing I did want to flag from the city's side is Stacy's kind of taking the lead on these FFNE items, so I've been meeting with, you know, the mayor and staff members about office furnishings, and we've got some cooperative purchasing options there, looking to make the floors match the look, so the more traditional look on the first and second, and more modern look on the third. Um, so that's something that will be coming back to you all in the very near future to approve those recommendations. And then same thing on access controls, which you all budgeted for in the fiscal year budget, and then outfitting council chambers AV solutions. So, all of those things are kind of swirling in the background, and you should expect more to come on those things very soon. So, thank you.
That is all that I have, so I'm gonna turn it over to these guys to talk about schedule.
Should be coming up. Um, so like Elizabeth stated, second, third floor, we are very near to completion. Um, I think all we lack is some casework, final paint, and we plan on punching within the next two weeks. First and second, or first floor and basement will follow the, obviously, on the third floor minus the mayor's office. Once the abatement's done there, we will pick back up work. Um, we have worked very rigorously, adding crews. I've got two crews on the exterior, working simultaneously with two crews on the interior from a general trades contractor. Um, as we stated, the flooring contractor's been working weekends, trying to keep pace. So, we are working to get this thing done every day. Mike and I both are kind of tackling this thing as far as coordination-wise, so hoping to get it to December date, so. Take any questions?
All right. Any questions?
You had talked about the date of occupancy, has that changed?
As of right now, we are still working at the contractual completion date at December 12th, yes ma'am?
December 12th, still?
I will say, that will depend on the abatement. We can't get into the mayor's office until that's complete. And also depend on the first floor, and what the arch window turns.
All right. Any other questions and or comments? All right. As always, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay, next, and it's one of the items I believe that you all asked, and Council did, that's for the, uh, I think it's Michael Swiskey brought this up, it's for housing and some ideas, Mr. Mickey brought up an idea about, uh, housing, so give that task to Candace to bring us some information, I'm pretty busy at this point in time.
Well, thank you all for giving me some time tonight to update you all. Um, while that's going around, I just did want to briefly tell you all that our ESG grant, which is our emergency solutions grant, again, that funds our rapid rehousing program and part of the low-barrier shelter that operates at the gathering place. Um, we applied for that two years, rounding about two years ago now, and we came to you all asking to renew that grant. Um, it was not a competition year, we just had to ask for renewal. Um, and we did get tentative notice that we have been renewed, based, you know, waiting on things to open up federally, but we did get that renewal, so we will bring more information about that when it is available. But I did want to give you all that good news, that's around $99,000. Um, that, again, goes towards rapid rehousing and the emergency shelter. Um, and so, that's, and they, that renewal is based on like performance and keeping, you know, programs in compliance and things like that, so, big compliment to us for getting that renewal. Um, and then I, the main thing that I wanted to talk to you all about is the request for like a timeline pulled from the matrix from the housing needs assessment. Um, and so, I've tried to condense- And so I've tried to condense to a one pager because I know you'll get a lot of information given to you in a night. But I did want to touch on some of the goals that I have outlined. So I tried to break it up by quarter. I guess I should definitely start by saying this is a hopeful document that we will be able to move through these tasks and make progress. But as you all know, is dependent upon a lot of moving parts and a lot of factors. So this is a living document, as they say, but something that we can refer back to as I come and update the council and a guiding, a guiding mark for us. So all of these goals are taken in some form from at least one of the tasks in the matrix, which I also gave you copies of that. You have seen that before in the housing needs assessment, so I gave that to you for reference. As we are ending the year of 2025, one of my biggest tasks is to expend that money from the ESG grant. I've referenced this before, but we did find out about our grant into the grant period. So it's technically, it was July 24 to December of '25 is the grant period. And we didn't find out until last year, like October, November. And then we had to build our programs from scratch. And so we are technically behind on spending that money, simply just because we haven't had the time. And so I'm trying to spend those funds by the end of the year. And we are, we are doing a great job the past few months. We have made a huge dent because we have our program up and running and we are able to house a lot of folks. So that is a big focus of mine is to try to get that, that grant cycle wrapped up nicely so we can start the next one on a positive note. But the next goal for end of 2025 is to engage in conversations about how to mimic the Transylvania Affordable Housing Project in Lexington, something that's been brought up. And so having conversations about what that would look like here in our community, because we can't take exactly what they did, but trying to look at what that would look like in Georgetown. And with that, just exploring land acquisition for affordable housing and trying to encourage affordable housing developments here in our community. That ties back to many of the strategies and goals in the matrix. But to name a few, strategy number two, goal number one, to prepare a series of small area plans, targeted areas to create a planning vision and strategy to improve housing, infrastructure, parks and open space, and create new community partnerships. And I won't read all of them to you, but strategy four, goal number seven, to explore partnerships with local business leaders on housing incentives for workforce recruitment. And then strategy one, goal number one, to create community-based affordable housing entity. And so that is kind of the big one that I guess is always lingering over this office. How can we bring in more affordable housing developments? And so specifically looking at that transient project, but also looking at other projects like the Quality Inn that Councilman Chris brought up. And I will, I guess I can, I can update that after the timeline if that's okay. So in the first quarter of 2026, I have down organized the K count 2026. In short, the K count is a snapshot of how many unhoused individuals we have in our community on one night of the year. That is under strategy number four, goal number five, we want to improve that annual count. And so my office will be overseeing that in January of 2026. The second goal there is to consider ordinances to reduce soft costs for affordable housing. So strategy five is generally about housing policies, code changes, and community education. And so looking at action from the council on looking at ordinances, on how we can make our community more affordable housing friendly and encourage folks, maybe eliminate some barriers for affordable housing projects to make their way into our community. And that would be in partnership with you all, but also planning and zoning as well. And then also potentially in the first quarter, because again, nothing is for sure, the rapid rehousing funding through the COC, the continuum of care, should be opening back up in that window. I asked somebody from KHC and they said, fingers crossed that it will be, but they weren't sure with things up in the air. But we applied for this when I very first took this position, like I think within the first two months. And we did not get that grant. But since then, we have acquired a few different, or a couple of different federal grants, and I feel like have made a great impression on KHC. And so they have actually asked us to try again on the COC rapid rehousing funding, which is different than the rapid rehousing funding we have right now. So the rapid rehousing funding we have right now is through ESG, which is money through KHC that they allocate themselves. The COC is a competition with a larger pool of money that is coming straight from HUD and not KHC dispersed, if that makes sense. And so hopefully we will be able to apply for that. And I would look for you all to support that application and if there's any matching funds, things like that. Having support from the council will be huge on acquiring more funding for that program, which is already making a huge difference in our community, which I touched on last time I was here. Under the second quarter, began building a model for the community land trust. This is something that I've also mentioned a few times, but that is mostly under the strategy one section. They really, on the matrix, lean into a land bank more so. But as I've had conversations with local officials here and honestly lived here, it feels like to me, a community land trust would make more sense for Scott County. And so that's why I leaned away from the land bank a little bit and looking at what a community land trust would look like here. And your support for that and developing whatever that looks like for our community. I've spoken one-on-one with one of the people who helped to start Berrytown, which is in Louisville, it's a community land trust. It's been incredibly successful on preserving the housing in a neighborhood so that way folks aren't getting displaced and gentrification is, they started to see that happening in their neighborhood and decided they didn't want that happening. They wanted to preserve the housing there for people to own those homes and to continue to live in that neighborhood. And so I kind of, I met with him and he heard what's happening here in Georgetown and thought it sounded very similar to what was happening there in Berrytown. And so he's happy to help guide us in looking into that community land trust idea. The second quarter is to build, or sorry, the second thing under the second quarter is to build a model for a long-term rental registry in our community. This is under strategy five, goal two. It's in the very last bit of it, to expand registration inspection of long-term rentals, sorry. This can be very, very beneficial for our communities and I've heard a lot about this. I'm happy to talk about that, but I would love to build that model and start looking at all of the parties involved in that, because that's a lot of different people and there's costs to that. And so the council supporting that and funding whatever that program ends up being, would be something that I would be coming to you all for. And then also in the second quarter, submitting a strong CDBG grant. This is under the strategy four, goal four, to create a new homeless housing facility to meet shelter and support service needs. And so that is something that we have been working on in partnership with the gathering place, submitting a CDBG grant. One of the issues is that CDBG money is great, but it will not fund that whole project. So council is wanting to look for opportunities for other funding sources or the city maybe matching with the county, things like that on building that new building over on the gathering place property, so that way they have set aside low barrier shelter. And I've gone into before why that is a huge need, so won't go into that so much. But I will tell you, I'm pretty sure they're full tonight. And Heather was running around trying to do jigsaw puzzles on fitting people in tonight when the snow started hitting. And so we do have a space issue. We also have a unit issue of trying to keep families together or keep people safe with, you know, older teens who are displaced, things like that. We need flexible spaces where people can be safe and stay overnight. And then as we get further out, we, in the third quarter, again, the community land trust process, but then also beginning to implement that long-term rental registry component. And then in 2026, looking at what maybe, at the end of '26, looking at what maybe an affordable housing trust fund might look like. A lot of communities have that, and I know that seems a little daunting, but something that if we are serious about affordable housing, needing to look into that. And then, yes, so I feel like I'm repeating myself a lot, but as you can read on the document there, and all of those again tie back to that matrix. And if you, and some of them hit multiple of those goals. And so I'm happy, I guess, to answer questions about the timeline.
All right, any questions about the timeline or anything that Candace has presented to us?
Yep. Can you talk a little bit about the Transylvania Affordable Housing Project? What's that like and how do we hope to eventually, you know, implement it here?
Yeah, so it's actually a project that their local government didn't really have a lot of involvement in, but I am, and a lot of folks are interested in, and so something that I'm looking at. But essentially, a lot, or a group of banks in Lexington got together and wanted to contribute to affordable housing. And at the same time, so a lot of stars aligned, but at the same time, Transylvania University was looking to sell a piece of land that they had that actually had an old baseball field on it that I guess they weren't using anymore. And so these banks came together and purchased the property, actually at a little bit of a discounted rate, Transylvania discounted it a little bit, and held on to this property while having discussions with developers. Devin, correct me if I'm wrong on the timeline on this, with developers, who then, they came up with a plan, and so they have multiple developers on board. One of those actually is Habitat for Humanity. And so now they have a plan for this piece of land that involves affordable housing, like apartments, but also some Habitat homes that folks can own. So it's a little community. And as the developers finish their work, then they'll be paying the banks back with their 0% interest on that loan, and so, or loan. And so it benefits a lot of, or benefits all of the team players because a lot of times people can't purchase and hold land like that while trying to work out the kinks for developing. And so it's a very unique project with a lot of people involved, which I think is what makes it so cool is a lot of different types of partners came to the table. But I think the local, you know, city's government is now very excited about the project, but I don't think they were actually involved in the project itself. So not sure what that would look like here.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Before you, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. And I know actually Councilman Minky had mentioned this at the last update. You know, the Kentucky Bankers Association is really intentionally working on building that model so that it can be used elsewhere. We obviously have, some of the partners to the Lexington project are very, very local partners here. And I think even some other financial institutions who maybe weren't, weren't ready to be on the forefront for that first project, their, their interest is now piqued. So they're working on that in one corner. So that model will be great, but ultimately timing and just, you know, independently operating and having those conversations with banks about what, what could work here, you know, to that point. Those banks were able to hold that property for those developers who couldn't, who couldn't financially make that work. So that's the benefit, that's the give that they're, that they're bringing to the table is we'll get this property, we're going to hold it for you, and you all are going to build this partnership and not have that interest on top of the transaction. So I think banks are excited about it. It's important to keep an eye on what the KBA is doing and where they go with the model. But to Candace's point, just, you know, continue to have those conversations. Candace, mayor, judge, even alongside of what they're doing, just so that we're, we're already ahead of the curve and we're already trying to engage those folks and find the property or identify the partners on the forefront. So it's definitely worth keeping an eye on where the state association goes as well. Sorry.
And well, thank you for your work on that. We, we had, as Devin and Candace mentioned, we had some conversation. We've already met with some of those that were, are interested in that. And, you know, we got some people that's going to come to the table on this. And this is going to be a private and as well the city and also the county is all joining in on this. So stay tuned, we're going to be working on that and that's what we're doing at this point in time.
Great, okay. And do you have a, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, do you have a quick update on the Quality Inn?
Yes.
Okay.
And so I did talk with Holden for quite a bit. And then I also talked with someone from KHC about this project specifically. And it's what spurred the little thing on the bottom of your timeline, the qualities of a great affordable housing location. And so some things that we spoke about with the Quality Inn is that the model of taking a hotel and refurbishing it for affordable housing is a great idea. It has been done in a lot of places. There is a lot of things already there that work, so it's like smaller units, there's a lot of parking. And, and so it is something that is very attractive as far as project and I think would be great. And personally, I love a good rehab, so. But there were some concerns that we had with the location. One being that it is not walkable to very much anything out there on that exit. And so there's no, it is in a food desert. And so there is no quick access to any kind of grocery stores or markets. And there's not a lot of community, or there isn't any really, community space out there. So those, those were some concerns. One thing I think we could do is request it be added to the bus route. And so that would help with transportation at that location. It's not a great solution per se, but it is helpful for that, for that. I do think it would also need to be annexed or recommended to be annexed. And that, I'm not sure how that would go in that location. We were, another, again, just another step that would have to be taken would be to have it evaluated for environmental contaminants with the history of the building. It's likely there probably is some, which is not meaning that we couldn't pursue it, but there's just another task that we would need to look into. I think that if we wanted to pursue this specific property, that we would need to explore creating more of a community rather than just housing. And so maybe putting a small market there or adding a park. Like I said, requesting the, the bus stop go out there. So we'd need a little more than just flipping the rooms. There are quite a few ideas on how to make it, each residential unit pass codes. So you can add a little kitchenette into each room. Or maybe looking at more like a dorm style and adding kitchens on each floor. So there are options to explore there. But we also would then need to get specific on who this housing is serving. One thing that KHC did say is that if we wanted to pair it with a program, that permanent supportive housing really is the only program that we could pair it with. And that is very similar to rapid rehousing, but we are, like in the name, permanently supporting folks in their housing. And so that's really targeting vulnerable, vulnerable folks who are unable to be self-sufficient on their own. Or if we just wanted to be affordable housing renting, that looks different as well. Another topic that we brought up is the parking. So the regulations for parking for a hotel are not as many as for housing. Because I guess you assume that everyone at the hotel maybe came in one car for the night, whereas people who are staying, a lot of times families have more than one car. And so we would need to also look into that parking. So I'm trying to think, Holden, am I forgetting anything?
Well, I've got next.
Okay.
One quick thing, I drove out there the other day and there's a gas station right next to the property that's one of those expanded. right next to the property that's one of those expanded gas stations with a mini-market in it.
Okay.
And then, I guess, across the street on Cherry Blossom is going to be the huge Kroger development.
Oh.
Evidently, you know, I guess that's coming in about a, you know, year or two, or whenever David Lesby and Matt Welch get that going, but I know that's going to be going.
Okay.
So maybe by the time everything, you know, comes around here in a year or two, three years, it would be ready for all that. But I, I think it's a great location, and, and they, and everybody would have, you know, places to buy food, walkability across the street, maybe look into getting some other different options there, too. But thank you, that, that sounds great. It's promising, you know?
Continue to look into that. It did give me an opportunity to open discussion with KHC on what the funding for projects like that look like, and so I was able to talk with them, and I'll continue to learn more, because so far I'm just familiar with the, like, rapid rehousing ESG home TBRA funding, which is assisting folks where they're at, but this would be what they call a rehab, acquisition rehab project. So that's a new pool that I would be looking into.
Great.
So thank you for that opportunity.
Thanks.
Mr. Menke?
Thank you, Mayor. Candace, thank you for, for sharing the, the timeline. That, that's very helpful. One quick question with the Housing Authority, with Rick Tony and kind of their strategic plan, is there integrations and any synergies that are there for this that can be incorporated into that? I didn't see any of that here, so.
Yes, sorry. It is on my post-it note, so I didn't, I didn't put it on my timeline, but I did want to mention, so thank you for bringing that up, that the Housing Authority is highly involved in some of these goals, and so we don't manage them or oversee them in any way, so I didn't put them on my timeline, but I know that Rick Tony is very enthusiastic about growing the Housing Authority and meeting a lot of those goals on that list. And so I guess I wanted to just say that as the city council, supporting them and hearing the requests from them that I assume will be coming, and the Planning and Zoning Office, I know, has been speaking with them, too. So just, I guess, having open minds about how they're going to move forward, because I know that Rick has a lot of plans to expand the number of units, which is great, because their waiting list is very, very long, and so.
I also think that Rick is trying to expand on his own property, in my view, he's at right now, before he kind of ventures out, because I think he's like two, two and ten to two and twenty more units can be added on to his, his spacing, so.
Yeah.
I may not be correct with the numbers, but I think it's, it's, it's a significant amount that they're trying to improve that, too.
I think I also want to highlight that he is trying to also bring more voucher programs, so the homeowner program, he is trying to work to bring here. And while those aren't brick and mortar construction of affordable housing, things like the rapid rehousing and TBRA are creating affordable housing here in our community, and so I don't want to undersell the importance of those. I know that they're not as exciting as like a ribbon cutting, but it is making housing affordable here for a lot of citizens, and so him bringing those type of programs is a big deal as well.
All right. Any other questions, any or comments? Candace, as always, thank you for your hard work, and continue on. All right. Next, item 12, Georgetown Scott County Planning, Zoning Quarterly Update. Okay. Mr. Holden Fleming?
Councilmembers, Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here, as always. I'm going to try to make this quick and just open myself up for questions. So this is the second quarterly update that we've, we've now had. You'll notice the months up here look a little funny. That's because after I last updated you in July, there was a special called meeting of the Board of Adjustment, and then we've already had the November Board of Adjustment meeting, so I figured I've got the data, so I'll go ahead and put it up for you. Since your last update, your Board of Adjustment has considered a number of conditional use permits and variances, a total of eight applications came before to the Board of Adjustment. The breakdown on that were seven approvals and one denial. The denial was for a daycare facility that was at the front of a neighborhood, and the Board of Adjustment felt that that would be too much of an impact, and the applicant didn't show up, so that was denied. The next one, I think, is a little bit more interesting, and if we'll go to the next slide there. This is what your planning commission has been working on, August, September, and October. The November meeting hasn't happened yet, but we did have two meetings in October, the regularly scheduled meeting, and then a special called meeting to consider an updated RV ordinance for Scott County. There's a lot of numbers up there, a lot of colors, but the things to look at, the, the two primary things that came through this last month were a number of zoning map amendments, and then number six, those were preliminary development plans. Unlike the last time that I was in front of you guys, there's a new color added to the decisions will of the fourteen different cases that the planning commission had in front of them. Seven were approved, five were either withdrawn or postponed, and then two were denied. Those two denials, one being the first version of a industrial park legacy, or, yeah, legacy industrial, and then the second one being a request to rezone some A1 property into the I2 heavy industrial zone associated with a potential metal recycling facility. And so that's, that's the real quick overview of the number of cases and the types of cases that the planning commission has reviewed in this last quarter. Again, we're moving fast, because I know you guys are going to have questions. Next slide, Zach. My office continues to be dedicated to community outreach, making sure that we don't just stay in our office, but we get out into the community. And so I would like to highlight one partnership that we were very proud of this last quarter. My office was able to partner with a number of other community groups in support of Tree Week. Georgetown had a number of events. I was able to participate in several of them, including a tree dedication at Georgetown College, as well as one we called Branches and Brunch, where we talked about what does, what does a, a street tree program look like here in Georgetown? What is the right amount of canopy coverage for our community? Things to that nature. And then also, that was supported by Georgetown College as well, and so they had a presentation on some of the social benefits of trees. In addition to that, we continue to make a commitment, right, I'm going to look at you on this one. We have had continued conversations with ECS, getting involved in a lot of their school programs out there, and then also had the opportunity to go to the Georgetown College Career Fair and talk to the best and brightest of our community, and talk a little bit about what planning does, but local government more generally, too. People always have questions about what the city or what the county does, and so where I was able, I pointed them in that direction. We're moving quick. You guys saw this slide last time, this is a basic overview of what a long-range planning project would look like. We don't just do short-term planning or current use planning, we also do long-range planning, strategic planning. I was really pleased to get the opportunities to talk to Candace last month about that potential project at the Quality Inn. That kind of, of partnership, putting our eyes up on the horizon, looking forward, I think it's going to be very beneficial for our community. But if we'll go to the next one, this is my last slide. I, I went ahead and just highlighted a couple ongoing long-range projects, just so you guys can be aware of what's going on. The closest to adoption right now is that new RV ordinance that the county, or that the fiscal court is considering. They should take motion or have a first reading of that this Friday. If you look further down the line there, there's one that is in the preliminary drafting phase for an ADU ordinance. You may be asking, if those are county projects, why are they on this list? That's because both of those projects right now are tailored to the county. However, those may be opportunities to, to take a look at the City of Georgetown's code and see, is there an opportunity to add regulations related with either RVs or accessory dwelling units inside the city limits? And so what would that look like? How could accessory dwelling units be utilized as a means of adding additional housing stock or, or adding flexibility in our market there? The other, last two are much earlier on. We're currently working with the City of Stampin' Ground to take a look at their zoning map and some of their zoning regulations, and why does that matter to you guys? If I'll look to my left over here, several of your council members, as you know, have, are in a subcommittee, where they're doing exactly that for the City of Georgetown, and looking at, doing a deep dive onto what the City of Georgetown zoning regulations currently are, and where there might be room for improvement, where we can update based on our comprehensive plan, as well as look forward into the future. I have that inception stage right now, because I'm hoping that that will continue to yield fruit, so that that can then move from the, the working group to the full council, and then full council in partnership with the planning commission. We can, we can really, I think, make some great progress in updating our zoning ordinance. And so that's the quick overview, and I just wanted to take a moment and, and say that I would love to answer some questions, but I also understand we're coming up on two hours into the meeting, and you guys still have a lot of business in front of you, so I don't want to take up any more time than, than what's necessary.
All right.
I just have one question.
Yes.
And Holden, it's for you, but it's really for, like, Kim and Michael. Talking about the subcommittee group, when we first put this group together, we said we hoped that you all would have something to bring before the council by the end of November, and I was just, so that we could be quickly moving into the bigger group and moving forward. And I was just wondering if you could, if you thought that that was still a reality, that you could do that? How are things going?
I'll just say we're working towards that. That's the goal, and we're working towards that.
And I think we were going to present a report tonight.
Yes.
Karen was ill, and I think she would have had some, some good things to report, so yeah, we're, we're definitely making our way, and it's, it's enlightening and eye-opening. Thanks also in huge part to Holden, as well, helping to educate us on everything.
So, so with that, we can also, since she's not going to be here to report, that was item number 13, I believe, on the list. So since we're not going to be reporting anything on that, we'll put this back on the agenda for the next meeting, and, and we'll, hopefully, when Karen's feeling better, that she can give us an update, okay?
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to say thanks for the information.
Yep.
It's expanding into, into your world, so thank you.
Yeah, we're good there. I will say one other thing. We've heard the term "small area study" a couple times tonight, whether it's associated with an affordable housing project or some other community interest. My office is always willing and able to assist in those, and we look forward to partnering with the city on all projects moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Holden. And as I mentioned, item number 13, since Karen's not going to be here to give us report on that, we'll move that item to, and add that to our next council meeting as a, as a item on the agenda to be added. Item 14, Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Services, A, a permanent financing of WWTP, number one, upgrade and expansion. Okay?
Mayor, if you would allow me to jump to item B under Georgetown Municipal, that's the informational update.
Okay, yeah, you want to?
Multiple council members have requested.
Okay.
I think that'd be a good place to start.
Yeah, and I think you sent something to me, which I'm going to share with council. I believe you sent some information to me to, to share with them later on, that email I got, I just saw it, so.
Yes.
I'll be sure to do that.
Well, let me say good evening, and before we get to our two business items, at the request of a couple of our council members, Councilmember Stone, Councilmember Hambrik, also Councilmember Menke's asked for, for some of this information as well, just had some kind of general questions that we've had, topics from our customers, and I wanted to take some time to address those before we get into second reading of bond ordinance and a future capital project that we're ready to present. Do have a, a good, good bit of information, so we'll, we'll jump right in and see, see if we can kind of clear some things up, answer some questions, and then jump on to the, the other two business items. So if we can go to our next slide, there, these topics, they're kind of really in no particular order. They're, as I said, this is kind of some frequently asked questions, some customer concerns, and part of this will be review, because as, as we talk about water quality issues that have been brought up, we've got to start by doing some, some education on our water source and what makes it unique. So we're going to start there. Again, if that's, if that's review, again, for you, I apologize, but it is a good starting point. And then I want to touch on customer usage, billing, our leak detection and response process, and then finally get into some of our long-term planning and infrastructure investments related to metering and billing procedures. So go to our next slide. We'll start out, our water supply, Royal Spring, it's unique because it combines, as a spring, it combines both elements of surface water and groundwater. Our source water that feeds Royal Spring, the Royal Spring Aquifer Recharge Area, that is part of the Kane Run watershed that extends as far down into downtown Lexington. That is where all the way, that far south, and then stretching all the way up to Water Street to the mouth of the spring, that is the, we, we see that as the aquifer recharge area that feeds Royal Spring. Water that's traveling in that aquifer, it is traveling through the limestone karst geography, geology that is very common in the Kentucky River Basin, the, the watersheds here, and then it travels, it travels through those, those karst areas, and then it, as I said, it comes out at Royal Spring. So Royal Spring, it is classified as surface water under the influence of groundwater. And all that to say, first thing I want to address with you tonight is water hardness. Got a lot of questions. Our water is hard. I've got to add a softener at my house, because the water's so hard. As the water moves through our aquifer, it, it picks up minerals, calcium and magnesium from the limestone dissolved into the water, and that's what makes the water hard. Most people recognize hard water as, when I'm in the shower, I have trouble lathering up, I can't get that soap to lather, just kind of washes off, whereas on the other end of the spectrum, soft water, that's when you're in the shower, you've got your soap on, you can't, you don't feel like you can get the, the soap off your skin. Most people prefer somewhere in the middle. But as I said, our water, because of the geology, it is, it is considered hard on the hardness scale, poses no risk, poses no health risk for showering, for consumption. It's, it's more of a preference thing, and we absolutely would love to be able to soften our water. That's never been pursued during my tenure or previously, to my knowledge, simply because of the capital cost that's associated with that. I don't know what that would be to add a softening treatment process to water treatment plant. If that is something you'd be interested in looking at, I'm happy to tell you, I'm happy to look into it, but I'm going to tell you there's going to be a capital cost associated with it. I'm happy to, happy to follow your lead there, but just, just knowing that is, that is not an inexpensive technology to add to our water treatment plan. Next slide, please. In addition to hardness, there's concerns about taste. Generally, we hear about these concerns once, twice a year. We heard about that in the public comment earlier. Spring and the fall, it's common. You've heard me talk about from this podium these issues before. And what causes that, as I've said, it is the development and then the decay of algae blooms within the, the aquifer, and these are not, these, that algae bloom and algae decay, that's not unique to Georgetown. That is common across the Kentucky River Basin, you'll see that across multiple utilities. Algae blooms, they, they come up in the water, and they're affected by a number of things. They're affected by seasonal changes, which, which also are impacting precipitation, sunlight exposure, temperature, nutrient runoff, and the movement of the water through the aquifer or through the watershed. Both, both of those time periods when we have taste issues, they're either by wet spell, during wet spells or dry spells. So in the spring, we have a lot of precipitation, that's washing all, everything down into the watershed, into the aquifer recharge area, it's pulling all those nutrients into our water source that feeds, that's fertilizer for the algae blooms. Similarly, or similarly, it, it's results in the algae blooms, but for a different reason in the fall, late summer, early fall, is when we get, I think, the, the worst taste issues. We have those dry spells, water levels go down, and then water gets stagnant, it's not moving as fast through the watershed, and that can result also in algae blooms. And then when it decays, that's when we have that taste issue. As I've always said, these are not a health, there is health risk, they pose no health risk, the water's safe to drink, it just has a minerally earthy taste. We all know when it's happening. I will not stand here and deny that. Obviously, it happens. How we combat that when it's at its worst is we dose the water with activated carbon. However, we cannot dose enough. However, we cannot dose enough with enough detention time at our water treatment plant to fully address the issue. We can have an impact. It's not going to, uh, remove those taste issues during these times a hundred percent if I stood here and said it did, I'd be lying. Um, I will say, uh, something that I'm going to talk about in a few minutes. Um, our upcoming slide is we are looking at, uh, some capital improvements that are going to help multiple issues, taste and odor issues being one of them, but I'm going to talk about that in just a few minutes. Um, as I said, we try to get information out whenever this is happening, usually in the fall, usually in the spring. News Graphic has even started putting out some information as well. We're doing the best we can with managing that. We tried the water plant to, um, to treat that as best as we can. Also, when we purchase water from Frankfurt Plant Board, Kentucky American sourced from the Kentucky River, we're still having those same issues. Um, the water just in the Kentucky River Basin, it's going to have taste issues when we have those algae blooms. So.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Chase, you mentioned that this is a common issue throughout the Kentucky River Basin, is that correct?
Correct.
Are other water companies, municipalities, are they having the same issues with the taste and odor?
Yes.
Do they, do they do anything to try, have they taken any measures that we could maybe look at?
I think we can. Um, one of the problems is footprint. We are on a small footprint and you need more detention time, you need more storage at your water treatment plant. The longer you can dose with activated carbon, the better you're going to treat those taste issues. Um, but we are still looking in how we can do that.
Is that, is that what, is best practice with the other, other issue?
I'm most familiar with Frankfurt Plant Board since that's where we purchase supplemental water and I know they have a much larger footprint and they have longer detention time to, uh, to treat water for taste. But I think even when we're buying more water from Frankfurt, especially in the fall when the spring is, um, not producing as much raw water, we still get that. Um, I don't, I don't know if it's as bad, but we still get it.
Okay, thank you.
Go to our next slide, please. Um, let's switch this up. We're going to stay on water quality, but we're going to switch, uh, topics. We're going to go to, uh, what's called PFAS treatment or better known as forever chemicals. Um, again, this is not the first time you've heard me talk about this. We've addressed this here from this podium before, but, uh, little bit of review and because of the, some of the misconceptions that we hear about, I'm going to start from as basic as possible. Um, PFAS, they are human-made, they're not naturally occurring, they're human-made compounds. They're used in various industrial and consumer products and now we are considering those water contaminants. So as I said, starting off very basically, we, it's Georgetown Municipal and other utilities, we are not the producers of these compounds, nor do we add them to the water as part of our treatment process. Maybe everybody here understands that, but we get those questions. Why are you adding PFAS to our water? We are not. Um, I can't stress that enough. We don't manufacture these compounds and, um, they're not used as part of our treatment process. What they, where they come from, why they're used, uh, they're highly desired compounds. Um, they're manufactured because they're fireproof, they're waterproof. And so you have a lot of good uses, um, non-stick cookware, fire retarding materials, water-resistant, uh, any type of water-resistant spray for clothing, for anything else, food packaging, cosmetics, carpet, all of these use PFAS chemicals. They're in common, common usage and after years and years of being in common usage, um, we see a buildup of these compounds in our environment, not just in the water, also in our soil. Um, PFAS chemicals, they, uh, are measured in parts per trillion. And so the, the comparison that the EPA in studying this and Kentucky Division of Water, these, uh, parallels that come from the EPA and Division of Water, one part per trillion is one drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. Um, another way of looking at it, again, from EPA and from, um, Division of Water, one second in 32,000 years. That's how incredible, uh, incredibly small we're talking about. So we have to measure that at that concentration and then we're going to have to treat that at that con, concentration. New legit, the new regulatory rule that will be in effect is we have to be below four parts per trillion, uh, in our drinking water as a concentration. So we're taking this seriously because it's, it's part of, uh, what we're going to be expected as, as maintaining water quality. So, um, the EPA, Division of Water and all water utilities across the country, we're going to be taking steps to figure out how we get PFAS out of the water. We didn't put it there, but we're responsible for getting it out. Um, we've started with development and implementation of, uh, of different processes that, uh, we're looking at that can be used to filter out these compounds. So we started, we're partnering with Division of Water. Uh, we're working on research on a carbon treatment, uh, pilot program to remove PFAS. Well, we use carbon for taste and odor as well, so we're going to get added benefit should we select, uh, a carbon treatment. Uh, we'll be using that for, um, PFAS treatment as well as improving our taste and odor. So, um, that's, that's a good thing that we're, we're getting to do this now because it's going to provide multiple benefits. EPA says this needs to be implemented and we, we're meeting that maximum contaminant level by 2029. And so the question comes up, I think, uh, the technical is one thing, but it's always, how are we going to pay for this? So we've taken part, as most utilities have, in class action lawsuits, multiple class action lawsuits against the manufacturers of PFAS. And we have been awarded, um, so far through two of the settlements, uh, we have received funding and those funds are received over a payment plan over a number of months, uh, I think actually years. But we have started to see some of those funds. Those funds have been put into a, um, a fund specifically for this future project. Additionally, we've also secured grant funding through the state legislature to implement these treatment processes and, um, we are hoping with the class action lawsuit funds, grant funding, that we will be able to implement these treatment processes with no impact to our customers, no impact to rates. We can treat this, we can remove it from the water, but I'm going to tell you it's going to be a problem for water. It's going to be a problem in wastewater until we find a better way to manufacture and keep these, these compounds out of the environment. Any questions on forever chemicals?
How much do you currently have in reserves for that? You said you received some money already?
I know the, uh, funding request, I believe it was, is that 2 million?
No, it's just less than.
Okay, so, um, that was the, let me send that out. I will report back to you, but, um, we've received that through the state, uh, line item allocation from last year and then the PFAS settlements. I will tally those and send those out to you and I can present that at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
If we go to our next slide, please. Uh, next topic that we've had a lot of questions about is our metering and our billing. Um, so we received questions about these topics and I want to go over kind of how our, uh, meter reading and billing cycles generally work. So we have seven billing cycles for our customer base and that's based on geographic location. Each billing cycle is usually 30 days long. Uh, within a billing cycle, days one through 14 of the cycle, those are for meter reading where staff collect radio read data. Okay? So a staff member drives in one of our specialized trucks with a computer, um, on a specific billing cycle route and each reader, uh, each, each, uh, meter is read via radio relay between the meter and the truck. That data is transmitted, downloaded into the truck automatically. It is not entered manually. Um, that part of, uh, manual entry, that, that error, potential for area, error is taken out of the equation, that is radio relayed, uh, and then it is downloaded from the truck to our, um, billing and customer service database or billing software. So days 15 through 19, those are the review period for our customer service staff and they can look at and they evaluate high or unusual, unusual readings within the billing software. Day 20 is when the bills are generated and sent out. Next slide. So depending on your billing cycle, which is, uh, dependent on where you actually live, um, your bill is due on either the fifth, the 10th, or the 15th of each month. And, um, there are, uh, for, uh, bills that are due on the fifth, there's two billing cycles. Uh, for bills that are due on the 10th, there's one, uh, there's, I'm sorry, not billing cycle, two, um, two, I'm sorry, yes, billing cycle, there's, um, two that are due on the fifth, there's one that's due on the 10th, and there's four that are due on the 15th. Um, and that's again, based on, um, how we can efficiently do the truck routes to read the meters. So we bill one month in arrears, so one month behind. So if you're a new customer, you're not going to receive your first bill till you have one full month of, um, service and usage and bills are typically mailed out with two weeks, uh, so you have two weeks before they're due. Next que, uh, next slide. Said there are typically 30 days, but one of the big things that we see and that can cause confusion is they're not always going to be 30 days. Uh, they can vary due to a number of reasons. Weather can, uh, can impact our ability to read the, the meter routes, uh, with the truck. Um, so that's kind of the first one. If into the month, there's a holiday, um, that can impact. And then the biggest one is staff availability. We have, um, eight members of our distribution crew that can, uh, run these routes and if they're busy, uh, servicing main brakes or any other of the many, uh, functions that they carry out, uh, the, the billing cycles, those can lag. So you might have, uh, while our goal is 30 days of usage in your billing cycle, you may have 32, you may have 33, you may have 34. Then the next month, if you have 33, you should have 27. Um, so that's always important and that is pointed out in what's highlighted in green there is the number of days in your billing cycle, uh, on the bottom of that slide, which is a, um, example bill.
Chase?
Yes, ma'am.
Question. Um, so you said it might be instead of 30, it might be 32, but might it also be 50 or 60?
I don't know of a time that that would have happened.
Okay.
It's generally going to be right around 30.
Okay, the reason I ask was that that might be what's spiking a bill?
It could and I, I think that it could in terms of if you're, if you use generally the same amount of water, the difference between a 34-day cycle and a 30, it can make a difference. I, I don't know of a time that I, I would have known that we would have had a 50-day billing cycle.
So, so are you saying that you, you come to my house every month and look at my?
I drive by your house or in the vicinity of your house.
And go with something? Um, okay, it's not like, um...
You're not going to see somebody walking up your street with a pick and pulling you through here.
Just, okay, just wanted, like, some utilities estimate and they get by once every 90 days and then they true it up.
Ours is, uh, meter data that's transmitted via radio read.
Okay.
Let me get back to my spot here. So, um, how, how, how is usage read? Well, our meters, they don't reset. Um, they do record cumulative average, so the system calculates usage by subtracting your, uh, prior reading from the current reading. And then customers, if they're so inclined, they can, uh, divide the number of days, uh, take, uh, into their usage to get their average daily use, so that can help them track their, their water habits. I'm going to talk more in a little bit about how we're going to improve that, um, here in the future. But, um, I'd also like to point out, since we've got an example bill up, is that, uh, I was just talking to a gentleman out in the hall and he asked me about this, is we do bill for water and sewer, but as you look on that left-hand column at the bottom, you're also, depending on where you live, you're going to be receiving a bill for 911 fee, uh, solid waste fee as garbage and your school tax. And those three parts, um, are remitted back to the city or, uh, the Board of Education. Those are not collected and kept for Georgetown Municipal. So that is additionally why you will see, um, why, why your, your bill is, it's not just looking at the total. You've got to look at the breakdown, see what you're paying for water usage, what you're paying for sewer usage, and then the other fees that, um, that are assessed to the customer. That is all part of our billing because we've invested in a billing software and, um, other entities have taken advantage. We've used every line of billing code that is, uh, will fit on one of our bills. So the next, uh, if there is a future fee that's going to be added, it will have to be added somewhere else.
Chase, if I could real quick, um, for those that in, just in, within the city, but for those that live out in the county, I have been told that there are some that receive a sewer bill on their, even though they're in the county and they have no sewer, they're on a septic system. Is that?
Can I, can we get there, uh, on our, I think I've got, talking about that in another couple of slides, but don't let me forget about it.
Sure, no problem.
Um, that's, that's concerning.
Yes.
That is very concerning.
Uh, Chase, getting back to the, to the reading of the meter, are your scanners, are they calibrated? Do you test those?
Yes. I'd have to get you more information on, uh, how that, how that happens. I know the meters aren't tested, I'm going to talk about that.
Okay.
Um, but as far as the, the meter would be where you'd have to be testing.
Right.
Um, not, not the, um, the radio relay and the computer because that's just downloading the information.
Okay, alright.
And Chase, you mentioned that all the different items that are on the bill and that was a conscious decision that was made by the different entities because if we had to do bills for all of those different things, it would cost citizens more because there would be, we would have to have billing set up at the nine, from the 911 center or from the school tax. So the school tax, you'd be getting all kinds of different bills, which would end up costing the citizens more.
I do believe these were added as part of inefficiency, um, on, on the part of, uh, the partnership of the city and the utility.
That's right.
Let's see, can we go to the, the next slide, please? So we can't talk about this without having some perspective on, um, what average usage looks like, um, for different activities. So we have, um, pulled data from the US EPA Water Sense, that's the, the primary source of this, and they look at, uh, an average residential household of four. And what, um, EPA states is, uh, and then I'm going to kind of compare that to ours in a second, but they're saying average usage for a residential household with four persons, you're looking at 9,800 gallons of usage for water per month. I would guess that's a little bit high, but I would certainly think that that's still, um, still very possible and not uncommon at all. Um, looking at, uh, our residential customers, we typically see our residential customers and that's not broken down with any number of persons per household, that's just all residential, including apartments, including townhomes, single-family residents. Um, ours are just under 4,000 gallons per month. Uh, that is what we see and, um, for the purpose of this presentation, um, we did look back at least at October, um, uh, looking at when we were going to do this presentation and we have, uh, by examining our billing software, we had, we look at that, um, 95% of our residential customers use under 10,000 gallons per month. So, um, I thought that was a good data point, um, for the, the point of this presentation. I think it does show that some of these, uh, expected usages are high, but, uh, we're going to dive down into those just a, a bit more. Looking at a 10-minute shower, you're going to consume 25 to 30 gallons of water. Looking at this one, I kind of, uh, because I think it is important, uh, because it is a part of, um, usage, but also it is a source of leak that we're going to talk about in a minute. But, um, toilet usage, modern low-flow, high-efficiency toilets are going to use around a gallon and a half of water per flush. Um, how, how the, uh, EPA came up with that total usage for toilet flushing, uh, even for a family of, uh, residents of four, being 2,500 to 5,500, I don't know about that one. But, um, again, I think that it's, it's pretty common that the high-efficiency newer toilets are using a gallon and a half of water per flush. Washing dishes, you're going to use around 240 gallons per month. Washing clothes, around 800, uh, gallon, gallons per month. And I'm just pointing this out because usage does add up quickly. Conservation, conservation efforts, simple as making sure you're turning off your water while you're brushing your teeth. Um, that will show a significant reduction over time. I promise it will. I don't know that, I still don't know that everybody does that, but, um, even though we're in the business of selling water, we're also in the, the business of promoting concept. we're in the business of selling water, we're also in the, the business of promoting conservation of our water resources, so, um, conserve your water. Next slide, please. So, what happens if we see high usage, or a customer sees high usage? What happens? Um, well, we will detect, um, usage, high usage, uh, or unus- unusual usage for a customer through reviewing of that billing cycle data, so that, that happens days fifteen through nineteen of the billing cycle. Um, I will point out, uh, because we've had questions about this before, that is data that we cannot share. If you have a problem, we have to deal with you one-on-one, we cannot deal with groups because we don't share that information. That's private information, customer usage, customer data. Um, we can track system-wide trends, but we cannot, um, we just cannot do that. That information is not for public use and for public sharing. Um, so I'll say that, uh, based on our staff size and what we can, uh, review, I will say, starting out at worst case, if we're reviewing and we see an outlier for, and I'm talking residential here, if you're using fifty thousand gallons or more, uh, beyond what is your monthly average, that will immediately trigger a meter check, and we will track the customer down. You have a problem, we have a problem, we are going to find you, and we're going to get that resolved. That's too much water, uh, something is going on there. Um, anything over, um, thirty thousand gallons over your average usage for residential, we are going to reach out to you, phone, email, um, letter, and, and generally, we will try to do a leak check there immediately as well, and I think we do that most of the time. If you are twenty thousand gallons over your normal average usage, uh, for residential, that is when we're getting to where we are, that's, that's where we're going to have trouble, um, getting to each customer if that's happening. But as I said, ninety-five percent of our, uh, residential customers are below ten thousand gallons per month. But even at twenty thousand gallons, as we have availability, we will try to reach out, we'll try to do those, uh, leak checks. Um, point out, we offer free leak checks, we offer, um, toilet di- uh, test kits to help customers identify leaks. Toilets are one of the primary culprits of leaks and high usage. Um, we also will look with the customer at their historic usage, try to identify trends, see if we can see what's going on, but I will say, that starts with, um, either us contacting the customer, or the customer coming in to see us. Uh, that's what has to happen. Um, next slide, please. So, before we get into leaks, I will point out that high usage doesn't always mean you have a leak. High usage can be from high usage. It can be from normal usage with heavy extra activities, filling a pool, running a sprinkler, pressure washing, all things that happen, um, and I will point out, just as some of these are measured, uh, washing a car, you're going to add a hundred gallons of usage per occurrence, watering your lawn, uh, during the dry months, um, that's a big one. You're looking at, uh, thousand three hundred, thirteen hundred gallons per hour. Um, pressure washing, four hundred gallons per hour. So, um, helping customers to understand how these activities are going to, uh, impact your, your usage on a monthly basic, basis, it adds up, it's going to cause a difference. So, that's high usage, next slide, we're going to get into leaks.
Chase, just, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to, um, clarify, this, this is just your water usage, the charge on that, you also have, you also have the charge on the sewer side, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Um, I'm going to talk about that more in a minute, too, um, on how we bill for sewer. I'm going to come back to that, and I know I've still got to come back to Mr. Stone. Um, great. So now, we go from high usage to actual causes of leaks, and how we define a leak is if we go out to do a meter check, we, uh, get with the customer, and we have them shut off all water, uh, usage fixtures in the house, and then we look at the meter. We can do that with the customer. Uh, we did that with Mike Skoggin at the News Graphic, um, where, where he had, uh, an issue, and, and he came out, he, he wanted us to do this with him, so he could see, and we'll do that with any customer. Um, if we shut off all those fixtures, we look at the meter, and it's showing a constant flow, we know we have a problem. The water's going through, um, we know we've got a problem, so, um, we open that meter, as I said, we shut off those fixtures, and we see what's going on. Running toilet, I said, that's one of the main culprits, uh, that can waste up to six thousand gallons of water per month if just a flapper valve is not seating properly, and it's really frustrating, because one can seat one day, then it come up, then it can seat fine the next day. Uh, that one's hit me personally. I had a huge bill, me personally, um, and it was a toilet flapper valve, so we recommend you check those, replace them every six months. It's a chore, but it will, uh, prevent you from having that huge spike, um, that I think will hit everybody at some point. Um, small leaks, dripping faucet that can add up to two hundred fifty gallons a month based on just that dripping interval. Um, next one, it's not uncommon. We hear about this, the customers will tell us, yep, I left a hose on outside, forgot about it overnight, forgot about it for a number of ti- for a long period of time, that can, you can look at three thousand gallons of water usage in leaving that hose on for an extended period of time. So, it's a number of places that leaks can occur, and we try to help our customers with that, and sometimes they're not always visible. Councilmember Stone and I have talked about that one. One was found under a driveway, um, not visible. Sometimes we can see it on the service line, because you've got a dry yard, and where that service line is, it's nice and green and pretty. You know, you've got a, you know, you've got a leak there. Um, but, again, we stress conservation to avoid that high bill, um, I stress replacing those, um, flapper valves based on bad personal experience. Go to the next slide, please. Um, and again, in preparation for this, we look back at October, and we pulled some data, uh, from the billing, uh, software, and we completed a hundred seventy-five leak checks last month. Of those, a hundred sixteen were requested by the customer after they received their bill, fifty-nine were initiated by our staff when we reviewed the bill and saw something abnormal. Um, we confirmed leaks in thirty-five cases, again, where we shut down the fixtures and saw constant flow at the meter, and those were able to be, um, those were able to be completed. This is very important distinction, again, because true leaks, um, determining a true leak versus high usage, they're two different things, and they have to be addressed two different ways. Any questions there? Okay, next slide, please. So, can't talk about usage and billing without talking a little bit about water meters. Um, so, little info on water meters, they're pretty basic devices. You have a wheel inside, um, that's that white piece that's on the right side of the slide. A water enters the meter from our main, travels through the meter into the service line, and that wheel, the water spins that wheel, it's a vane wheel, and that wheel is magnetically linked to the register that you see on the black part of the, the top of the meter, and, um, based on how many times that wheel spins, that will correspond to a specific water volume. Over time, um, opposite of common thinking, meters will typically under-register usage over time with age of the meter, uh, due to wear on that vane wheel, and due to mineral buildup on that, uh, vane wheel. So, um, I won't say that it ever happens, because I'm sure it could, I don't know under what circumstances it would happen, but a meter could, uh, I won't say won't over-register, but, uh, saying I've got an old meter, it's, it's over, it's over, um, calculating my usage, that's the opposite of what's happening. Um, so, the older it gets, likely the lower the, uh, the usage is going to show, we're underbilling you, uh, we're undercalculating that usage, so when we do check a meter or replace it, you're likely going to see higher usage when that happens, because it's more accurate, the newer it is, it's going to register a higher usage. Um, all new meters, they're tested at the factory to ensure their accuracy. Um, we do offer that we will check a meter in the field, we will pull a meter and check it at our warehouse, we just put a known, uh, volume of water through it and see, but we will also send it off to the manufacturer for accuracy testing. Uh, I will say, on that part, there is a fee for that, if it comes back that it is, in fact, reading correctly, that fee gets billed to the customer. However, if it comes back that the meter is malfunctioning, um, that will be, uh, that will not be billed to the customer, and we can look at how we need to credit that account, um, to make up for any incorrect meter usage that has occurred.
So, if a customer calls and they think that the meter is malfunctioning somehow, you do take note of it, you do come out, and you do a meter check?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think this is something that, um, I'm excited about, I know our staff is very excited about, and I think as we implement this over time, our customers will be very excited about kind of the future of where we're going with meters. Um, that sounds a bit nerdly, I'm sorry, but, um, that's, that's our business. Um, we have started the process to upgrade our metering system. We are not doing this because our meters are inaccurate. We're not doing this because there's a problem with our meters. We are investing in advanced metering infrastructure, otherwise known as AMI, because it's going to improve service to our customers, it's going to provide transparency to our customers, and it's going to improve our operational efficiency, um, quite a bit. So, AMI, instead of it just being a radio relay between a truck and a meter, it's hybrid, cellular, and radio, and, um, we eliminate that truck having to drive, uh, on those routes. We can, um, download that data from the media, uh, meter directly into our customer service and our billing database. Um, that's done, uh, but the number of steps with, um, the relays that we'll have to put in, in order to broadcast those systems, but here's the benefits. One, customer service, as well as our customers, you can see daily usage, there will be a customer portal that will be developed, you can sign in and view your daily usage. We might even be able to get this down to hourly usage. Um, not sure, we're not that far enough along to know, but I do think we will get daily usage, you'll be able to sign in, um, if you're so inclined, and look at your daily usage, so you can track your own trends. Um, we can also set up leak detection alerts, so if you get a spike, you're going to get an alert, and instead of us waiting thirty days to read the meter and seeing that there was a problem back on day one of the billing cycle, we're going to know immediately, and we can address it immediately. It's not something that's going to go on.
Chase, does that go historical, or is it just the day of and going forward?
Not sure yet, I believe it's historical.
Okay.
I don't know how long that data will be retained, we're, we're learning about this right now. Um, but, um, the, as I said, the customer will be able to look at it, customer service will be able to see it daily, and I think the biggest thing is, we can set those leak detection alerts, um, through the, the customer service portal. I think that's going to be a really good thing for our customers. Um, real-time data, that's what it's about. So, just where we are, we have received, uh, statements of qualification from consultants to help us with the procurement and the implementation. This is going to take, it's not going to be a months-long process, it's likely a years-long process to move this through our whole system, but, um, we have been putting funds aside to launch this, we buy so many meters, we've been trying, instead of buying the radio read meters, we're trying to buy less of those, stretch the life, and then be able to put that money away for, uh, AMI. Additionally, we have, um, we have requested funding, uh, from the state legislature to help us with this. Um, I'm hopeful that we'll be successful in that pursuit, and then also part of the bond issuance that you heard about last week, that you're going to hear in a few minutes, we are putting money into that bond issuance, so we can do this process quickly and bring this service to our customers. Questions on AMI? Next slide, please. We're going to get into that, uh, different types of customers here. So, um, we have three types of customer accounts, water-only, sewer-only, and then combined water and sewer. Uh, our water-only customers, those are generally customers outside the city limits and west of I-65. Um, that's generally water, water-only. There are a few, um, anomalies there, uh, the Cincinnati Pike Corridor going north, um, council and the utility years ago decided to extend sewer service that way. We also do sewer service, uh, in Stampin' Ground, and now, uh, toward the southern part of the county, just in that, uh, limited service area as adopted by the city council through ordinance. Uh, but, everybody else, that's where your water customer, water-only customers are going to be. Um, sewer-only customers, those are going to be the customers outs, um, inside the city limits, but east of I-75, and those customers, that is the Kentucky American Water Service area, so Kentucky American provides the water, and then we build a sewer based on the Kentucky American water usage we have, uh, we receive that from them monthly for those customers, and what they are consuming in water is what we bill for sewer usage. Then you have, um, what is, as I said, those, those pockets, uh, outside the city limits, but then everybody inside the semi, the city limits is generally a water and sewer customer, and we bill for water based on the water meter, uh, registered usage, and then sewer is, is based on the water usage. Questions there? And you said you had somebody that is not on sewer, they're on septic, but they're getting sewer bill. They need to call me right away. You need to get, I, I know you always are very good about getting me, uh, the information, I really appreciate that, but we will get that straightened out right, I don't know how that would have occurred, but something's wrong there. Um, Mr. Hampton, did you have, remind me, you said you had something on that, I think it was about the different types of customers we have.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's kind of the explanation. Um, currently, just to give you the breakdown, we're just under four thousand water-only customers, um, we're just under, uh, we're four thousand eight hundred sixty-five sewer-only customers, and eleven thousand four hundred thirty-eight combined water and sewer customers as of last month. So, that's kind of the breakdown there. Next slide, please. Um, going to point this out, and this is a point of pride, um, we have a local walk-in brick-and-mortar place, if you have a problem, you can come talk to somebody face-to-face. As far as utility providers go, uh, at least in this area, I think we're the only one, and that includes gas, electric, telecommunications, um, you don't have somebody that you can go meet with, and I'm not going to promise that, um, one of our customer service reps that might we meet with you is having a bad day, and maybe it doesn't go well, but I think by and large, our customer staff do an outstanding job, I think they deserve combat pay, and, um, very proud that we offer that. Um, you're not going to get that with other, uh, with other service, that's just bottom line, we have that, um, as management and the board insists we have that, I think you all would insist that we have that, but, uh, they are there, and I will say, if you have a problem, that is the best place to go. That is where you're going to get answers, um, that's where we're going to be able to, to, to help you figure out what's going on. Can't promise that you're always going to like the answer, but we're going to find the answer. Um, again, sometimes it just is usage, but sometimes it's a leak, sometimes it's a meter. We got to figure that out, you got to come see us if there's an issue. So, with that, uh, I think I've talked for long enough, I'm going to step away and get a drink of water, but, um, do you have other questions on customer service, billing, water quality that I can answer tonight?
Not really a question, but this presentation, can you make this available on your website?
Absolutely.
And then with a link to your Facebook page?
Yep. So, um, that said, I'm going to turn the floor over to Finance Director Jeff Nutter, he was here with you all last, um, week, or two weeks ago, I'm sorry, to discuss the, um, bond ordinance, and we also have members of our team with, um, our bond counsel, Mark Franklin, and our, uh, financial advisor with Baird, that's Chip Sutherland, so I think we can all be ready to answer your questions, anything else that you have remaining related to, um, the very, um, very important, uh, next step in our, um, bond issuance, permanent financing of the treatment plan.
Can, can you send that to us individually as well?
I can.
Thank you.
So, website and, um, send to council. I will say that this is just briefly, Jeff, Jeff can better counsel you on anything technical related on this than I can, as well as our team, but this is the culmination of five interim financing, um, measures that have been, uh, brought to council, and I believe unanimously approved at every step of the way. Um, this was anticipated in our twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, um, rate study and rate ordinance, this is how this was projected, that was reviewed again early, uh, last year and early this year, presented as part of our budget, so, um, we feel like this is the, the last step in financing this very important project, so I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Uh, while you're doing that, uh, what you sent me was the capital improvement plan today, and...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what, I think, Councilman Mickey asked, but I got that, and I was sure that was just council.
Yep. So, that is, um, what I sent out, that is, um, projects that have already been funded, projects that are included in this bond issu- That is projects that have already been funded, projects that are included in this bond issuance, or future projects that we know are out there, and we're going to have to chase funding for.
Thank you, Chase.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I did want to have one small piece of new news about the bond issuance that I wanted to share with you, and then we can get into questions if you have them, and then, of course, the second reading. We received our rating today from Moody's Investor Services. They rate our bond and our bond offering, and we received an AA3 rating, which is exactly what we were expecting. I think Chip would say the same. That's right in line with expectations. If, like me, you're not very intimately familiar with Moody's bond ratings, they have 21 levels of ratings, from everything from AAA all the way to junk and bonds in default. Our AA3 is fourth on that list from the top. It's considered investment grade and high grade by Moody's. We could, AA2, we thought we might sneak into the AA2 category, but that's really for municipal bodies that are able to tax, which we are not. The city would likely receive an AA2. But we did receive an AA3, which was exactly in line with what we expected. So I did want to share that. In your pocket is the deck I presented last meeting for the first reading. I did not intend to go through that completely again for this meeting, since we've been through it already, but I did want to include it in case you had any questions on the debt offering that we're going to have a second reading on this evening. Any questions I can answer? Or Chip, or Mark, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay, great. And this might be good for Chip and Mark. What is, what's the transferability, short-term or long-term of the bond? Chip, you talk a little bit about that, or?
Good evening. Transfer, do you mean transfer from, like, once the bonds are sold, that another investor can buy them? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, that, and then kind of a follow-up question is, you know, it's the bond over 30 years at 4.85%. The total repayback is $139 million. Would the water company be obligated to see that all the way through the 30 years? Or could it be, the bond be purchased or transferred before then?
So it'll be a 30-year bond issue that 4.85% actually has some cushion, and it probably should be closer to 4.60%, that's what we expect. But it's competitively sold. So with your all's approval of the second reading of the ordinance, we'll post a preliminary official statement and sell bonds next, a week from tomorrow. And it'll be sold competitively, the underwriters will bid on it, and we expect it to be probably around 4.60% or so. It'll be a 30-year bond issue with the option to, for the water and sewer system to redeem the bonds at no penalty after 10-year period. So I think 2030, 2035 is when the bonds are callable at no penalty, and you can redeem them all at that point if you needed to.
That's a standard period of time for municipal debts, 10 years. So we're going with the market there. And then the bonds are transferable. They're standard municipal bonds, so they're sold technically in $5,000 increments. So the underwriter that ends up buying them can sell them to as many investors as the total is divided by 5,000. So they'll probably sell far less number of investors in that, but they can be purchased by any sophisticated investor who wants to buy them from the underwriter. And it will be purchased later to transfer, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, guys? Anything else?
All right. I believe, Madam Clerk, you ready to read this? All right.
Notice of adoption and summary of ordinance, City of Georgetown, Kentucky. First amended and restated general bond ordinance. First amended and restated general bond ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, providing for the establishment of the rules, regulations, and conditions for the issuance of incurrence from time to time of obligations secured by the revenues of its combined and consolidated municipal water and sanitary sewer system, and providing for the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of the system. The above first amended and restated general bond revenue bond ordinance, the first amended and restated general bond ordinance sets forth the general rules, regulations, and conditions for the issuance of incurrence of indebtedness by the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, the city, to be secured by the net revenues of the city's municipal water and sanitary sewer system, the system. Provisions are made for the authorization and issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds, notes, and other program obligations such as loans from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority upon adoption of a series of program ordinance for the application of the proceeds of each such obligation for the establishment of a proceeds fund, a revenue fund, a sinking fund, a debt service reserve fund, an operation and maintenance fund, and a depreciation fund for certain covenants of the city with respect to the obligations issued or incurred therunder, and for defaults and remedies with respect to such obligations, such obligations when issued will not constitute an indebtedness of the city within the meaning of any constitutional or statutory provisions or limitations, but will be payable solely from the net revenues of the system to be operated by the Utility Commission of the city described in Section 96.32 of the Kentucky Revised Statute and operating under the name Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service. References hereby made to the full text of the first amended and restated general bond ordinance for a complete statement of its provisions and terms. Publicly read for the first time October 27, 2025. Read the second time November 10, 2025. The full text of this ordinance can be read in the City Clerk's Office, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, at 629 North Broadway, or on our website at www georgetown ky.gov.
All right. At this time, I would like to have a motion for the first amended and restated general bond ordinance. The sponsors of this were Sonya Wilkins Brent and Greg Hampton. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Hampton. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Ms. Brent. Other further questions and or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a comment. I think we all agree that the upgrades to our water and sewer service, the system upgrades, especially long-term, are very, very important. And the hard work that was put into looking at these improvements also appreciated and also equally important. But I think before we commit $72 million to this long-term financing, we need to address the deeper issues in the community about the erosion of the public trust in the water company. And I'd like to suggest that maybe we press pause and examine this a little bit further before we move forward with the vote.
Is there any, okay, do I need?
So are you making a motion that we table this?
Yes.
Right, so.
So you would need a second?
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we table this.
You have a second? There is no second, so we will continue on. Is there any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mrs. Wilkins Brent?
Yes.
Mr. Crisp?
No.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Minkie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
All right. So the motion carried six to one, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next is item two, second reading of Series 2025A Bonds Ordinance. Sponsors are Sonya Wilkins Brent and Greg Hampton. Madam Clerk, roll call. Excuse me, will you read it, please?
Notice of adoption and summary of ordinance, City of Georgetown, Kentucky. Series 2025A Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Ordinance. Series 2025A Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, water and sewer revenue and revenue refunding bonds, Series 2025A, in an approximate aggregate principal amount of $72,030,000, which amount may be increased by up to $7,205,000 or decreased by any amount. Designating a paying agent and registrar for the Series 2025 bonds, approving the preparation of a preliminary and final official statement for the Series 2025A bonds, authorizing the execution of documents related to the Series 2025A bonds on behalf of the city. Authorizing and directing the filing of a notice with the state local debt officer, establishing a cost of issuance account, construction and acquisition account, principal account, and interest account for the Series 2025A bonds, providing for the sale of the Series 2025A bonds to the lowest and best bidder therefore, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of a series of water and sewer revenue bonds by the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, the city, in accordance with the terms and conditions established in the first amended and restated general bond ordinance of the city enacted on the same date. The series of bonds is designated as the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, Water and Sewer Revenue and Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2025A. It is authorized to be issued in an aggregate principal amount of approximately $72,030,000. The Series 2025A bonds, one to refund or at or in advance of maturity all of the indebtedness currently outstanding under the city's existing general bond ordinance, including its A, City of Georgetown, Kentucky, Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds, Series 2013A, B, City of Georgetown, Kentucky, Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds, 2018 Series A, C, City of Georgetown, Kentucky, Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Notes, 2023 Series A, and D, City of Georgetown, Kentucky, Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Note, 2025 Series A. Two, to finance a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of various improvements to the city's municipal water and sanitary sewer system, including without limitation, A, south side storage tank and distribution system improvements, B, AMI meter system upgrades and replacements, and C, Dishay Estates Water Street trunk sewer upgrades and improvements, collectively the project, all to be utilized by the city in connection with its existing municipal water and sanitary sewer system, the system. Three, to fund a debt service reserve. Four, to pay the cost of credit enhancement for the Series 2025A bonds, if any, and five, to pay all or a portion of the cost of issuance of the Series 2025A bonds. The Series 2025A bonds are to be secured by a first lien pledge of the net revenues of the system under the ordinance and the first amended and restated general bond ordinance. In connection with the issuance of the Series 2025A bonds, the ordinance also approves, one, the preparation and distribution of a preliminary official statement and file official statement, two, the official terms and conditions of sale of the Series 2025A bonds, and three, the execution of a continuing disclosure undertaking. The Series 2025A bonds are to be sold at advertised public sale in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 424 of the Kentucky Revised Statute or by the solicitation of proposals as required by law. The Series 2025A bonds are to bear interest and be payable at such rates and on such interest payment dates as shall be established upon their sale. The ordinance provides that no Series 2025A bonds shall have a stated interest rate in excess of 7% per annum. Publicly read for the first time October 27, 2025. Publicly read the second time November 10, 2025. This ordinance can be viewed in the City Clerk's Office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, or online at www georgetown ky.gov.
All right. You have heard the second reading. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Motion made by Ms. Hamburg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Stone. Other further questions and or comments? At this time, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Minkie?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mr. Crisp?
No.
Mrs. Wilkins Brent?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, it passed six to one. Thank you. Next is the, I think it says, Dishay and Water Street Interceptor Sewer Replacement. Recommendation of award.
Here we have one final PowerPoint here. Final piece of business for your consideration tonight. Ready to recommend a construction contract for award for the Dishay Water Street Interceptor Sewer Replacement Project. This is after receiving bids on October 21 of this year. This project has been in planning for longer than the treatment plan upgrade. It's been in planning longer than I've been at Georgetown Municipal. Believe this was started first being looked at back in 2018, or 2015, 2016 timeframe. This project, we're going to replace two of our older and largest sewers within downtown Georgetown. We're replacing an 18-inch sewer and a 30-inch sewer that were installed in 1963 and 1983 respectively. Both of portions of, both of these sewers have been lined, I think some multiple times, and even the liners are not working anymore. We have a lot of infiltration and inflow in this part of the system. This is the primary feed of the treatment plant for the southern half of the City of Georgetown. These sewer, these parts of the system, it's not a question of if they're going to fail, it's a question of when. This project is a must. We're going to be installing about 3,700 feet of 42-inch sewer and about 1,300 feet of 8-inch sewer. And I'll point out, for this service area in the southern part of the city, this is one of the projects that, this is really to the benefit of existing customers. This is, most of that area is built out, or we mostly see infill there, not a major new subdivision. This is, this is just a project of infrastructure renewal, and it's not a expanded capacity. We will build in some additional capacity, moving up into that 42-inch main, but that is really, this is not a growth-related project. This is infrastructure renewal. So we go to the next slide. Do you have some maps of the project corridor, I believe? And I'm sorry, the maps never work out on these screens. I apologize. But if you can make out kind of the oval-shaped road, that is Quail Run Drive, and you see the colored project corridor to the east of Quail Run Drive or Circle. On the northern part of the map, you're seeing that is our wastewater treatment plant site. So that is the discharge point of the sewer. That will be at the new Dishay Estates Pump Station. That's the only part of the wastewater treatment plant. That's the only structure that will remain on the south side of the Elkhorn. So that's where this sewer will discharge. And you can see that coming up through the backyards of Dishay Estates or Quail Run Drive until we get to the part, and it's going to be, you can see it at the bottom part of this map. But if we switch the map, and this is flipped on its side, so north is pointing to the left here on screen, but we will cut across the stream behind the old jail, where the mayor's currently housed. And then we will bore under Main Street, and then we come up the, kind of the, that would be the east side of Royal Spring Park, Water Street Park, next to Water Street. And we will install that sewer to replace the existing sewer that's in Water Street, and that eventually ties into the existing sewer up behind, I believe it's the code enforcement or the old Georgetown Municipal Office Building. So this alignment was specifically chosen. We know that we're going to interrupt use of Royal Spring Park, that is for sure, but we also felt like the disruption on Main Street and Water Street with open trenching in that area, that would be the bigger cost. So that's why we chose this alignment. I'll point out, all easements are secured, and all permits are secured. We're ready to go with this project. And I think that the key for this project is good coordination and communication between Georgetown Municipal, our contractor, Cleary Contracting, City of Georgetown, Parks and Tourism. It's the only way this is going to work. So we know that we have that task ahead of us. We're going to get into more detail with some stakeholder meetings on this project so everybody knows what's going on. But we do need to get this started, and if we can go to the next slide. As I said, this started back around 2016. This project was part of our 2019 Critical Needs Assessment. It was included in the 2022, 2023 Rate Plan and associated ordinance, and the project was included in the updated, the update of our rate model that we presented earlier this year with our budget. So we received $3.7 million in grant funding, 3.741862, through the American Re... So, we received $3.7 million in grant funding, 3.741862, through the American Recovery Plan Act. That was kind of ARPA Round Two of the Cleaner Water Program, and then we're putting that funding with the proceeds of the bond ordinance that we just approved, so that's how we're paying for funding this project. Actually, the bid came in under budget of our most recent engineer's estimate that was around eight, 8.5 million, and our bid is at 6.9. So, that 4.8 million that was factored into the bond, that was based on a higher estimate, obviously, we will not spend that much. There will be change orders on this project, as with any, but we're very happy with this bid, and so I'm just pointing that out, that that 4.8, if you're adding 4.8 to the 3.7, that is, that exceeds the $6.9 million bid, but that's why that was based on, at the time of putting together the bond documents, that we are, we were basing that on the estimate, I believe right around 8.4, 8.5 million. So, we're happy with where this bid came in. Cleary Construction has completed this type of project for City of Lexington, City of Winchester, they're kind of a well-known contractor established. We've not worked with them, at least recently, but I have worked with them in Lexington and Winchester. I know they're capable of doing this work, so we're ready to recommend this project for award and get started on it.
All right. You have heard the request. Do I have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion made by Mr. Menke. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Mitchell. Are there further questions and/or comments?
Just a quick question?
Yes.
So, Chase, with being able to proceed with this, you'd be able to spend the ARPA money plenty of time to be able to...
We'll spend the ARPA money first.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Is there any other questions and/or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect that it passed seven to zero. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Item 15, City Engineer Resolution, County, County, City Bridge Improvement Program, CCBIP Grant Funds. Mr. Hattar?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is a grant that we applied for about a year ago to do repairs on the bridge on Old Oxford Road at the bottom of the hill over Lanes Run Creek. You've probably driven over it and maybe didn't even notice it because it's, it's a very small bridge, but it needs a new deck, needs some asphalt removed, upgrade the drainage, some of the drainage, and also get the rating back to where it needs to be, the tonnage rating that needs to be on the bridge. And we, Mayor brought this opportunity to me, he found out about this new program that KYTC had for these kind of grants, and we applied and got it, so.
All right. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms. Brent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hamburg. Are there further questions and/or comments?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
You know, Oxford Road has been a hot button topic for various speeding, roads narrow, Currently, there is a lot of construction that's going on out there, and there's a lot of multi-axle dump trucks going out that road. So, the sooner that we can get this done, the less likely that that's going to, you know, that bridge fails, creates more of a problem, then you're going to have residents that are going to have to go all the way up to 922, or they're going to have to snake through subdivisions to get back to Georgetown, so, you know, that, that's definitely a needed thing, so.
Yes.
Well, our next step will be to select an engineer to prepare the plans, and then we'll, we'll bring that back to you all, so.
And like I said, I saw this program through the Kentucky Department of Transportation, and I saw this would be a good opportunity for us to do that. I know that road is one that we were talking about, and, you know, as part of the big main project of, you know, talking about Lexus Way into Old Oxford, eventually to improve that, so this, I thought, would be a good idea for us. If we can get this kind of funding, and which we did, I think it's, for the long haul, it would be worthwhile, and it fits right into the plan which we had been put together many, many years ago. So, thank you, Council here, for at least looking at this and at least giving us opportunities for me to bring this to you all, for you all to at least consider.
So, any other question and/or comments? All right. Made and publicly second, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect it has passed. Item number 16, Finance Municipal Order, Stockyard Bank Certificate of Deposit Renewal.
At our October Finance Committee meeting, we reviewed the status of a couple of our investment accounts. It was recommended to renew the certificate of deposit with Stockyards Bank for a five months at approximately 4% rate, and we'll be hopefully at the next meeting or two bringing you a recommendation for the main investment account at Stockyards as well, but we're inviting our investment manager to come to the next Finance Committee meeting to review those recommendations before bringing them to Council, so.
All right. So, that may update for you. All right?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms. Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hampton. Are there further questions and/or comments?
Mayor, for me?
Yes, go.
As we look at renewal of all these investments coming up, Council needs to keep in mind that we've been riding pretty high over the past couple of years with our interest income, and as we see the Fed, what they're doing, you know, they probably will lower the rate a couple more times this year. So, as we see that, you know, even the short-term investing is going to get rather low, so we need to keep that in mind budgetary-wise, that this was just a short-term inflow for us, so that, you know, we just need to keep that up here as we look forward.
Budgeting, yes. All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next is item 17, Old Business. Is there any old business to be brought before this council? Yes, sir?
No.
Oh, he was pushing.
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right. Item B, New Business. Yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I emailed you a few days ago about exploring an idea to possibly sell naming rights to the pavilion, whether it was something we could do or the fiscal court. Have you got...
Yeah, well, my fact, I am still working with that, and I hope to have something for you by the next meeting.
Okay.
If not, sooner, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other new business? All right. Then next, item 18, Council Comments. Mr. Crisp, since you was in, and I'll let you start.
Sounds great. Couple of quick things. I got a text recently that the Royal Spring Bridge is very slick tonight, so everybody driving home that way, be real careful, it's super slick because of the weather. And then beyond that, want to wish everybody a happy Veterans Day, and also proud to be a member of local government. You know, federal government's shut down, but local governments, we don't, we work, and so I'm proud of everybody here on this council, everybody out there. Thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. Menke.
Just a quick question. In your comments, Mayor, you had talked about a report on the floodplain. Can you share that with us as well?
Yeah, that was the one, I think, where we, and Eddie, come on up and help me with this, but this is where they, we talk about the floodplain and on Broadway, was that it?
Yes, so, so the city did a study of...
Yes.
Of the reach of the floodplain on Broadway, all the way up from Bradshaw Dam down through the creeks, and then ending up in Royal Springs, and we did a study that had a lot of information about, you know, the properties that flood down through there, and we shared that report with them, so they can bring that, tie that in with their database that they're, that they're building at the state level. So, we basically shared the data that we, we had done for us with the state, so they could have, they can incorporate that in with the rest of the creeks that they're looking at statewide.
Okay.
We have a pretty extensive mapping of the Elkhorn and some of the major bodies like that, but this is a smaller stream, and it also has some flood areas that we shared with them, that what we found, yeah.
I'd be curious, I'd love to see that.
Yeah. I can get to you.
Yep, we can get that.
Thank you.
So, Eddie, if you can get that to me, we can...
I will do.
Or you can share it with them, if you would do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just making a minute, I will, we'll get it funneled out, okay?
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next.
Lee.
Oh, are you done? Oh, you're done? Okay. Yes, Ms. Hamburg.
I want to thank Chase and the water company for good presentation and for addressing many of the customer questions and concerns and the transparency that you brought to your, your slide show and your commentary, so thank you.
Okay. She took the words right out of my mouth. I just wanted to thank Chase too, and for always being available to answer my constituents' questions. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hampton?
Again, Chase, thank you for the presentation tonight. Hopefully, we can, you know, better, better help your customers understand how everything is done and show that there's transparency there, so thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
I'll just say, repeat, thank you so much, and I do think, Chase, that you do a great job in telling us what you're doing and, you know, breaking it down so that we understand what you're saying when you come to ask us to approve things. And just an update, not to this degree, but an update like once a quarter with the kinds of calls that you're getting, you know, it would be helpful, and it would, it would further enable people to see the transparency. Thank you.
Hopefully, that will eliminate people actually calling in to you all and say, hey, you know, what are the issues, because if we're updating people all the time on what's going on, hopefully, those, some of those questions will be answered, and they will not have much of those questions.
All right. Last but not least, Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you, Chase, that, great information. One thing for Chief Allgood and for Chief Johnson, a while back, we did the mental health phone app. Is that still in, in working, going on?
Yes.
Okay, because Mr. Menke brought up the fact of the new program, I just want to make sure that that's in cooperation with what we have in place, or, you know, so I think that's a great thing to do, coming from a retired police officer, so, and know what they're going through, so. The only other thing I've got is I want to say that we all need to remember the City of Louisville and everything that they're going through with the major catastrophe that they had, and it could very easily have been the City of Georgetown that went through that. I hope it never happens, but, you know, it's, you know, they had a major airport, we've got a major, we've got a lot of major factories out here that, you know, it can happen, so, you know, we just need to remember them and their first responders and all the people that are involved that are going through all that, so, that's all I've got. Thank you, sir.
All right. If there's no other business to be brought for this council, this council meeting is adjourned.